Good evening, everyone. We're gonna go ahead and start. Thank you all for coming to the Holyoke School Committee, October 21st, 6:00 PM. Quick announcement, this meeting is gonna be recorded and played live on the city's community TV channel. Ms. LaFawn, can you please do roll call?
Present.
Present.
Present. Here.
Present.
Here.
Present.
Here.
Present.
Here.
All rise for the Pledge of Legions.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, thank you. Ms. LaFawn, anyone sign up for public discussion? Okay, great. So we're gonna go ahead and move with the student showcase, starting first with the McMahon Art Students.
Yes, I'd love to invite Ms. Lawson, the art teacher at McMahon School, with her students from McMahon, of which there are a few here. I was very taken, well, I have been taken over the last year. Every time I go to McMahon, it is beautifully decorated with student artwork. And we just recently recognized Ms. Lawson with the Cone of Excellence for her terrific work as a art teacher, promoting the arts in the Holyoke Public Schools. And then in discussion, we invited her, and she graciously accepted, to present to the school committee and bring some students with her, because ultimately, it's the students who create the beautiful artwork at McMahon School. And I do wanna acknowledge them. Ms. Urick, the principal of McMahon School, is here as well to display. I think you're here to display artwork. Alright, so I'm gonna turn it over to the team for McMahon.
Hi, everyone. Nice to meet you and see you this evening. I have wonderful students with me here tonight. This is Isabella Guzman, and she is an eighth grade student. And whose class are you in, remind me?
Miss Hilliard.
Miss Hilliard's class. And then we have, who are you, sir?
Lincoln Gettis.
And whose class are you in?
Ms. Saltus.
What grade are you in?
Sixth grade.
Excellent. And then we have?
Nathaniel Gomes.
And what grade are you in, Nathaniel?
Sixth.
And whose class?
Ms. Saltus.
Excellent. And one more, mister?
Ryan Kennedy.
Ms. Saltus.
And what grade are you in?
Sixth.
Sixth grade, excellent. So these students have brought with them some artwork from this year and from previous years. We're at the beginning of the school year this year, and so we don't have a whole bunch that we've produced so far. But we, they were gracious enough to bring some pieces in from our past years. So Isabella is displaying a few different pieces this year, or from, this is from her, this is from when you were in sixth grade, right? So this is two years ago, this painting. And Isabella, who's in this painting?
Beyoncé.
And can you tell me a little bit about the project that we were doing?
We had to choose someone who inspired us, and then we had to trace them from the window.
Yep, so we used a transfer process, because it was a painting project, and we didn't wanna get too bogged down in the drawing part of it. So we did a little bit of tracing and then mapping out the lights and darks and gray areas. It was a black and white photo. And then we used a color system to fill in and mix and make all of these different shades of color here that are monochromatic. And then we used a complementary color in the background. What else do you have here, Isabella?
Our book covers.
Tell me about them.
Don't know much, cuz we just started it.
That's true. So we're making an accountability book cover. It's gonna become a hardcover book, and the students are gonna be actually sewing the signature pages of the book together, the internal components of the book. So they're learning all about the way that hardcover books are actually constructed. And they were tasked with creating a design that has flow between the front and back cover, and it functions as independently as one piece of artwork, and then a second piece on the back, and then a third piece when it opens up. So they have to connect and have flow between them. So we're doing this in the entire middle school, and this is gonna become the cover of our accountability book, where they grade themselves at the end of class, and then I countergrade them, so that they understand where they stand in the class. We're also gonna be doing some exercises in the book, where we do some do-nows at the beginning of the class, and they're gonna analyze some art historical pieces of work, and they're going to do some writing about that. So here's Bella's, and then Lincoln has one. Lincoln, can you hold that up? And what's your, what was your design about?
Mine was more looking, more like the beach. And, well, that's really it. Mostly a palm tree, rock, ocean. Tattoo.
Excellent. And how about you, Nate? What have you got in your picture? I know you, we've got, we don't have enough hands. What's in your picture, Nate?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, you can set some stuff down if you guys need to. Table behind you, too. There you go.
So I had a beach like Lincoln's and also a city, and the sunset going into, like, from the morning into darkness to the city. And I had an airplane with, like, a sign on it, but because we were supposed to have our name and our teacher from our homeroom.
Excellent, very nice. And how about you?
I have, like, a sports picture, and on one side, it's like all the balls of sports, and then the back is like all the fields and courts, and then I've been connecting to one.
He's used some really cool flame work in the center part to kind of connect and show some speed there of all of the different sports equipment moving there. And then Bella, what do you have down here?
Um, it's our kite.
And now, you're reading a book in ELA. What's that book called?
Um, I think Dragon Wings.
Excellent. And in that book that they're reading in ELA, they are, they're, people in the book fly kites and have kites. So, um, oh, The Father Makes Kites. Okay, so Mrs. Lacy, an eighth grade teacher, came to me and asked if we could make kites in the art room, which I thought was a great idea. So I kinda turned it into a watercolor project and an engineering project, because the kids had to lash together the wood and put it all together. In the back, you can see how Bella lashed it together, and then we made this border around the outside after she made her beautiful watercolor image on the front. Can you tell me about that image a little bit? What do the hands mean?
Um, well, I kinda just thought about how kids bring happiness.
Excellent. It reminds me of how artistic Bella is, cuz she's really, really super talented. And it reminds me of how whenever she makes something in the art room, her hands are always working hard and making beautiful artwork. So I think of that as sort of the art just flowing right out of her. Lincoln, what have you got here? What's this big papier-mache piece you have?
Which one? Well, this one I made in fourth grade, two years back. We were challenged to make imaginary bugs, insects. So I just made a random butterfly, short wings, has eyes everywhere, and supposed to have spikes, but they fell off. How'd that happen? And how about your other piece? And this one, I have, it's more of a Harry Potter themed, a snitch, Golden Snitch. About where we're supposed to be.
Um, yeah. And we were originally making banks, and then I had a student teacher at the time, and so they, he really kinda changed the project and made it this very imaginary project. When I came back, I was like, whoa, that's not, that's not a bank, but that's okay. So I was really impressed with what the kids came up with, cuz they were much more abstract than what was originally gonna be the plan. So I thought that was pretty neat. So excellent, Lincoln. And what have you got there, Nate?
So last year, we had an art club with Ms. Lawson, and we had, we had a project where we're supposed to, like, papier-mache our face, plaster cast our face, and after that, we would put in, like, mold, and we would let it hard, and it would become like your face as it originally was.
So what did you have to put on your face first so that that didn't stick to your face?
Oh, Vaseline.
How much of it?
A lot.
A lot. You had to scrub it out of every hairline and everybody's eyebrows. And it looked kinda like a spa in the art room. We had kids laying down on the tables and putting strips across their faces. It was pretty chill. And then they learned all about the molding and casting process, mixing their own plaster, pouring it, waiting for it to cure, and we talked all about how it created a bunch of heat when it, as it cured. The chemical process creates that heat. So it was a really fun project. So, so thank you, guys, for sharing your artwork with everyone. We appreciate it. And I have a little slideshow that kinda gives you an idea of, like, what we do throughout the curriculum from pre-K to eighth grade. Just kinda, I'll click through it quickly for you. Let me give you those things. Everybody? Thank you, guys. Really quick, if, does anybody have any questions? Ms. Burnett?
Yeah. So I was wondering, first of all, to the Harry Potter fan, do you have a Hogwarts house? What is it?
Hufflepuff.
Ooh, you're a Hufflepuff? I'm a Ravenclaw. Alright, but I do also have a question. Has this art class and your projects changed, like, what careers you wanna do or anything like that? Do you have any artists here who wanna become artists? You do, Bella? Do you have a medium that you wanna get into? Like, painting, drawing, sculpting?
I would like to start carving.
That's really cool. Awesome.
Anybody else have any question? Oh, go ahead. I would like to just open this up before we leave, because this is the next project that's happening at McMahon School. And I would like to invite all of you to come to McMahon School to see this fantastic artwork that is displayed in our building. So if I can hold this. Whoa. For the cheetah. So I've been designing where each child is going to start, and I've started, like, creating. Oh, cheetahs, yeah. And this is a very large-scale project that comes from all these fabulous. Wow.
Beautiful.
And the kids have, they're gonna come with a pattern, and they'll trace the shape. They'll roll out clay. They'll cut each child to the shape. And where it resides, like, in, in the face of the cheetah here, because that's our mascot at McMahon School. So I'm in the process of transferring all of the lines from that side to this side. And then seventh and eighth grade are gonna be rolling out that clay and doing all that glaze work. This is our first year using the kiln at McMahon School. We've never had a kiln in the past. And so Dr. Reich was very kind and got us a fan and installed all the electricity that we needed. So I brought my kiln in from home. And so we are gonna be firing it up very soon. So this will be an amazing piece when it's all done. I can't wait for you guys to see it. I hope you do. Thank you again for listening to us. Again, please come to McMahon School. We would love to see you. Mr. Collmore?
Yeah, I'm not sure which one it was. They said they were inspired by someone. Who inspired you to get into the arts?
I think when I was younger, Frida Kahlo inspired me.
Thank you very much.
Um, I guess my slideshow's a little bit long, so we'll probably skip that. Maybe I can leave it for you guys to check out. So, and you can see what we do, you know, from pre-K through grade eight. But I thank you so much for letting us come and present to you guys tonight. Thank you so much, and I hope you come on over to McMahon. Yes. One moment, Mr. Sheen.
Just two questions.
Sure.
How much time do students get for art during the normal school week, day, or whatever?
They have art for one week straight per month for an hour a day. So they have five days, an hour each day for that week. And then the next week, they go on to STEM Technology, or then they go on to Music, or they go to PE. And then we rotate around. So I see all students within a month period. So each month, they get five hours of art time, and then we meet ten times a year.
Okay.
So.
And do you find it challenging, lesson planning and planning out and having the appropriate supplies for a K to eight type of program? Or are there challenges with that, or?
There are, but I think I'm, this is my 21st year, and I've taught kids at all different, thank you, kids at all different grade levels. And so with that experience behind me, I think I do a good job of getting that all coordinated and planned out so that, you know, materials are staggered, and we're not all doing one thing at the same time. So I feel that we do, we have the supplies we need, and we definitely, you know, it's always a challenge in storage and logistics, cuz you know, I have kind of a little room, but, you know, we make it work. I have lots of shelves and, you know, we get it done. So it can be challenging, but I think I'm up to the task. Thank you. Anyone else? Oh, Ms. Williams, I'm sorry.
Um, I'm hoping that you're looking for volunteers, because I'm a craft person, and I'm working on quite a few art projects, so I will be over there.
Excellent. I love volunteers. Anytime. Please come visit me. I always love an extra set of hands and extras, you know, someone to help give perspective to the kids and help them, you know, discover what they need to work on, or even just, you know, giving each other critique is always something good that's modeled by not just me.
I have quite a few ideas.
Excellent. Very good. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Well, thank you again for coming.
One more thing. Ms. Lawson, do you mind emailing me this presentation?
Sure.
And then I can send it out to the school committee.
Sure.
And then the other thing is, we're always looking for student work to adorn the central offices, because, you know, we do work on behalf of children. We need to have their work. We should have their work on display at all times. So we really appreciate any work that people are willing to part with.
Absolutely.
So that we can display, display it in our offices.
Definitely. And we have a meeting coming up with all of the art teachers at PD very soon, and I'll be sure to spread that, spread the word. I'm sure between all of us, we can, we can have you, you know, well, well-arted up down there.
We would love to.
Alright, excellent.
Thank you to the parents, too, that came to bring your students here tonight. We really appreciate that.
Thank you very much. That was awesome. Thank you.
Alright. So we have the, I'm really pleased now to recognize the winners this year of the Superintendent Certificate of Academic Excellence for our two high school campuses. Every district in the state is given a certain amount of awards that the superintendent can give out for excellence. And the criteria is, among the criteria is grade point average, class rank, and then recommendation from the school. And so we had two students nominated, one from each campus, and I wanna take a moment and just read some, read a blurb about each of them. So I'd ask, I'd ask that Jack Shea please come up to the front. Where do we want Jack to stand? Right, right over here. Okay.
Face the camera.
And, let's see. So Jack Shea's academic excellence is exemplified by his stellar GPA of 4.6, his inclusion on the High Honor Roll for his entire academic career, and receiving the Rising Star Award. Jack has a fantastic sense of humor and amazing imagination, and above all, an ability to absorb knowledge and strive for more. In addition to his stellar academic success, Jack also participates in numerous after-school activities, including student government, the National Honor Society, and he's an all-Western Mass star athlete on the track team. In addition to his devotion to the high school and academic success, he has also worked as a volunteer at the local soldiers' home for many other events in the city, and has done all of this while holding down a job at a local restaurant. He's an amazingly bright and talented young man with a great devotion to his community and a diligent work ethic. I'll just end by saying that his AP European History teacher, Mr. Bichard, said that I can say without a doubt that he's the most academically gifted student I have ever taught. So let's give it up for Jack Shea. Dr. Mahoney, will you join me up here as well? Anybody have any questions for Jack before we move on to our next?
Thank you, Jack, very much. Great job.
Alright, our next recipient is Jorge Gonzalez. Where are you? Come on up, come on up. And I was just informed that I think this is, you're not the first in your family to get this award. Is that right? Does your sister, oh, okay. Runs in the family, okay.
Last year.
Yes. So Jorge is a driven, focused, and inquisitive young man. He boasts a 4.2 GPA and was the first Dean Campus student in the National Honor Society last year. He's the founding member of the Eagle Eye Adventure Team and a one-year member of the HPS Maintenance Team. He also serves on the teacher hiring team at Dean, who interviews prospective teachers. It should be noted that Jorge has perfect attendance and that he's the first Dean Campus Senior this year on co-op. He plans to continue in the electrical trade after graduation, and his teacher describes him as a quiet leader who's hardworking and humble. His future is incredibly bright. Congratulations, Jorge.
Congratulations.
Thank you, great job. Al capo real nats. Thanks, we wanna go have one.
Great job, Jorge. Anybody have any questions?
I would like to know what the Eagle Eye Adventuring Team is.
Oh, okay.
What is that? Sounds really fun.
Wanna come up to, can you come up to a microphone?
Alright, sorry. So it's a little club. It's founded by Jorge, myself, there's another Jorge. Jorge Jimenez, Jorge Jimenez, myself, Emmanuel Salamanca, and a couple others, I believe, that I can't think of right now. It's focused on trying to bring young kids outside, learn more about nature, and trying to get kids off their phones, really. And, yeah, it's kinda finding yourself outside in nature and what you like. And it's a great experience.
Yeah.
Yeah, we've done three camping trips in the past two years. I've been to all three. It's extremely nice. It's over the weekend, out in Peru, Massachusetts. Yeah, it's like an hour drive, but it's a beautiful drive. No highways, just, yeah, it's gorgeous.
The dream right there.
Yeah. I definitely would recommend anyone who likes the outside to join the club. I'm sure everyone is welcomed. It's really fun.
Is it open to North Campus?
I'm not 100%.
Okay.
But if it is, you have to be able to get there yourself.
Yeah.
Transportation-wise.
Are you getting on this, Dr. Mahoney?
So this was a partnership that Al Gates and Steve Cantowitz, our culinary teacher, started as part of the Leadership Development Program on the Dean Campus. It's in partnership with the Eagle Eye Institute, which, as Jorge said, is based in Peru, and the Kestrel Land Trust. And we're actually organizing Chef K and Al, and the students and the team are organizing a fundraiser for Kestrel and the Eagle Eye Institute so we can expand it from the Dean Campus to the North Campus. But what a great thing to be able to say, like, we're looking to take something from Dean and bringing it to North instead of vice versa. And I think it's a really great example of kind of how we're using the two campuses to pilot things and then, and then scale it up. So it's great, it's a great thing. Yeah.
Need it for adults, too. Mr. Sheen?
So I know we learned that Jorge wants to continue in the electrical field. Jack, what's your plans after graduation?
Um, I wanna be an electrical engineer and hopefully come back to work for HGNR somewhere in Holyoke. So, yeah, also electrical. Yeah, just a different field.
Are you starting to apply? Obviously, you're applying now for colleges.
Yeah, college.
Good luck to both of you.
Thank you.
Jack, did I see that you have a podcast that you're a regular member?
Yeah, that's the Herald Podcast, the Knight Rider Podcast.
Okay, how do I subscribe to that podcast? Cuz I have long rides, and I did listen to one of them on my way home. So are there other episodes?
Um, we're on YouTube.
Okay.
The Holyoke High Herald. So, yeah, we post a lot of stuff on there. We're trying to be more digitally based this year, because, you know, who reads the paper anymore? Teenagers.
Some old timers on this, behind these tables.
Yeah. Yeah.
Alright, I have to, I have to check that out. Thank you, guys, very much.
Thank you.
I read the coupons. Any other questions? Oh, Mr. Burks?
I guess just to comment, I had to say something. Cuz I'm just, you know, just incredibly inspired. And you guys are driven to be the best that you can be, And not only for yourselves, but helping other people in the groups that you belong to and the things that you're doing. And trying to show people the opportunities that are available to people. You guys have, you know, really embraced those opportunities and done something with yourselves and for other people. And it's truly an inspiration. You have an inner drive that not a lot of people have and the strength. And so I hope that you keep that and continue that. And Jack is one of the people who said that he wants to come back to Holyoke and live in Holyoke. So you're looking at the future leader, one of the future leaders that the Holyoke Public Schools has produced, as well as his parents, which have been incredibly supportive and his brothers as well. And Jorge, you too, you know, you're another future leader. You're doing a lot of things now, more things than a lot of adults do. So it's inspiring, you know, the drive that you have and I hope that continues throughout your life. And I wish you the best of luck, the very best of luck. So thank you for coming, it was nice to hear.
Thank you.
Now you can sing a song right now.
That was awesome, great. Um, so we're gonna go ahead and move on into student reports, Ms. Burnett?
Alright, so there are a couple student reports. On Friday, members of the Holyoke High School Theater Company went to Mount Holyoke to see Pride and Prejudice. Um, the Holyoke High School North Campus and Dean School students had a vastly successful peace rally at Donahue Schools on the 3rd. And Holyoke High held a senior field day on Tuesday.
Excellent.
Any questions?
Can I just also just call out the fact that Charlotte did an amazing job of being the emcee at the peace rally? And I was so impressed by how you led a very large group, more than we anticipated. And that takes tremendous leadership. Um, and I credit, that's a huge credit to you, um, that you were able to manage that crowd and lead us to what was a very, I think, touching, moving and inspiring ceremony. So I want to thank you for that, Charlotte.
Thank you.
That was great. Okay, so moving on to communications and report, we're gonna start with the committee updates. The building committee update from Mr. Sheen.
Thank you. Well, this has been a, serving as chair of the building committee has been a enjoyable, long roller coaster ride that I've been on with this group. But I think that we have done a lot of great work for our city. And when I mentioned to Ms. LaFave and Doctors Reich that I wanted to have a building committee update, I wanted this as an opportunity for any last minute questions that any committee members may have. Just want to share something too. Couple weeks ago, I had the opportunity to travel down to Columbia, South Carolina and visit the Lexington School District 2. And they're a district of roughly 8,800 students. Population similar to ours, they have pockets of urban areas. They also have some pretty rural areas. It's a county, it's Lexington County, but they're broken up with five different school districts within the county. So this was Lexington 2 with 8,800. Interestingly enough, they were going through a school building project themselves. We got to visit, um, one of, two of their new schools where they combined schools for that. And just an interesting tidbit that I found was that they had to do a bonding effort as well. And local government's much different down there. They actually have a school tax that every school board assesses on every home. And you got a separate tax bill from the district just to pay for education. But their residents for their school projects bonded a $220 million bond to build, to combine a total of four elementary schools into two schools and to create a vocational school, a newer vocational school. And also add on to their open air, um, high school with a brand new football stadium. Um, I will also say this football culture that comes from down south. A Friday night football culture is not something that we are used to getting to see the preparations for homecoming down in South Carolina. But it really, it was inspiring to see this community. I mean, I know everything is different now, it's very different than up here. But just the commitment that people made with that and the schools. And in no way were the schools Taj Mahals. But they were great learning environments for students and they met the needs of the community. And they really brought the community together with it. And that's the message that we heard. And I just thought there was some irony that wow, I've been living this now and I get to go see a district like this. Interestingly enough, in their vocational school, they actually have partnered with the state fire service. And you can become a firefighter one when you leave the vocational school down there. And they actually set up in their whole school, all these burn areas and crazy. Um, just to think like that this is something that other schools are doing. But aside from that, I will go back if there's just any final questions from anyone they may have about the project that they want answered, that has been, they've heard, they want anything, I'm here, Irene's, like, everyone's here. Are there any, anything?
Anybody have any thoughts, any questions? Mr. Colomar?
Did they get into the construction end of it at all, Devin?
Not that much. No, I mean, it's a different, different rules and requirements too.
Anybody have any other, Mr. Kishane?
Yeah, um, so I know we got some good news with the letter that we got back over the million dollars. I was wondering if maybe someone could explain, there's some, I'm seeing some back and forth where people are saying things that I think are not entirely accurate about that that million dollars will be taken from something that the kids are already getting in order to pay for the buildings. And I just kind of want to, I know that we're also looking at some changes in the way the formula is being done for funding us for next year. So I'm just trying to, like, someone can put that together in a very, you know, very simple terms to kind of dispel that information that's coming around.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask Anthony Soto to respond to that question because I think he's best positioned to do so.
And the letters that Niles is referencing is on page 82.
Yep. Thank you. So, uh, I will answer that, um, that, that million dollars wouldn't be taking away from anything that we're providing students now because the idea and the concept that, how this evolved was when we get two new buildings, the, you know, there's gonna be projected, you know, significant savings to the two and a four to four and a half million dollars. So how this evolved was how can the school department, you know, I think as we progressed, the people in the city and people watching this closely had said, well, why can't we just pay for the bond payment? If you guys are saving four and a half million dollars? So, um, we went back to the drawing table and, you know, we had conversations with Desi. And we were comfortable with committing that out of those savings, out of those future savings, we will be able to divert about a million dollars to the city. And then what the letter explained is how we can get to that million dollars. Um, so it wouldn't be taking away from anything that's being provided right now to students. It would just be sharing with the city and some of the savings that we are projecting to have.
Is it a one-time million dollars over a period of time? Or I just want to kind of get an idea of what it is exactly?
It would, uh, it's not one time. It would be a million dollars for the life of the bond. So there's three components to what is discussed in that memo. One of them is, um, out of our chapter 70 funds, the city's allowed to charge the school department for admin costs. And we've, um, we were comfortable, once we're realizing those savings, that we would increase the amount of admin costs that are charged to the school department from the city, which would reduce our appropriation. And then that funding would become available for them to repurpose. The other one is our indirect cost fund to grants. We would be able to pass that revenue right along to the city. Um, and then the last one is to, for the school department to enter into a service level agreement with the city to pay for legal services. So right now, uh, the city's law department provides certain services to the school department. And, um, by law, they're able to charge for those. And if we agree on an amount, we were able to pay for them out of, out of net school spending. And currently, we don't pay for them.
I just, I'm sorry, I'm just not following, is it one million dollars or is it a million dollars per year or how?
Through the life of the bond, so.
Okay, through the whole life of the bond.
Yeah.
Annually.
Annually, yes.
Yeah, a million dollars a year for the life of the bond. Not a million dollars over 30 years.
Okay, that sounds way better, okay. One million per year.
Are there any other questions that need clarification, Mr. Kishane?
Yeah, um, so one of the questions that I'm asked, or I see a lot if I'm not asked directly, is, um, there's, there are some tolerances that I think are built into the costs so that we don't go over the budget that we have. And I'm just wondering, you know, where can we point to those tolerances directly to assure our constituents that we're not going to go over the costs that have been projected so far?
Yeah, so when we started with this project, when it was originally decided to do two buildings, we had to make a decision, there's two different building models that we can follow. And there's the design bid build model, or there is something called CM at Risk. And I would say the majority of school building projects are done as design bid build, but most of them are one building and it's that for the community. We decided that since we're doing two buildings, to go the CM at Risk, which brings on a construction manager earlier in the process, which went out to bid. And it was an open bid process. And we hired Fontaine Brothers to be the CM at Risk for the, um, for the project. Uh, they work directly with the architect and the OPM when they were putting the plans together. And they all, each, each group used their own independent private estimator to estimate out the cost of the project. They also built in about a 10% contingency to cover the architectural costs, to cover a contingency of architectural costs and the actual construction costs. So with that, by doing a CM at Risk, the risk of the overage on the project or the, any problems with that would falls actually on the construction manager. So it's in their best interest to put together the best proposal possible when the project's going in, into the works. Because if they underestimated too much, then the risk is on them. If they overestimated too much, I mean, there's problems with that too to have, um, too much left over with it. So we're hoping, I mean, the plan is the project comes in right on target. There's other contingencies that we built in where there could be potential savings around swing space possibly, depending on what we need and other things. But I mean, um, the risk is on the construction manager. This can't be a project with millions of dollars of overruns and change orders that run this up to a $500 million project. Uh, it's going to be in line with where it is. I mean, looking at the MSBA website, it's speaking in general terms. I have not seen a recent project, a project in recent years that a district completed that was, um, that over budget and most actually fell under budget with that. I mean, what was unique for us was, uh, since we are Western Mass, I mean, there was some things that construction costs are definitely different in Western Mass than they are Eastern Mass. So that was taken into account with the project as well. But the, the risk falls on the contractor.
To follow with that, if I, if we wanted to point to the language in these contracts, are these contracts available to us online? Can we find that? Just, I, just one of those things that I want to completely dispel.
So, all 387 documents that the building committee took up are all live. I think it lives off a link off the Holyoke Public Schools website.
Yeah, there's a link from our site.
And it brings you to a Google, um, a Google Drive with everything in it.
And I could find these provisions though, like, I'd love to be able to like highlight these and post them myself just to kind of put that issue to rest.
Yeah, all of the documents are.
Google Docs lets you make copies for yourself to highlight stuff like that.
Everything is, everything is in the drive, anything that we touched is in the drive. So all of that is in there.
What's the name of the agreement I'd be looking for? Cause I, like, or something like, would just be just the manager's contract or something?
Yeah, I think it's in the, there's a folder that is called, um, it's called something along the lines of, um, bid review or, or, uh, construction manager, um, review. And it has the, the presentation that the construction manager made during the bid process. And it has the agreement there. Um, it's a folder with, it's a folder with two other folders in it with the documents in those.
I'll find it.
I mean, everything is actually really well labeled in there. And the, the Mass School Building Authority has all of their boilerplate contracts that they require up on their website as well.
Go ahead, Mr. Kishane.
Uh, I've been, I've been thinking about a lot of questions, sorry.
No, no, by all means, these are great questions.
Another, um, so, um, with regards, so on the one hand, I'm glad to see that there are tolerances and that there's a cap and we have, um, risk that's put on the folks that have sold us basically and helped us, you know, in this process. And then, um, the million dollars, um, that's an offset to try to bring the cost down. And, um, another item that I had, I had heard people talking about is a possibility of using CPA funds for some of the more expensive parts of this build, which has to do with excavation. What kind of commitments do we have now to see that those funds are going to be set aside for this project? Or what can we, what can we ask for?
The Doctors Reich and I actually completed one of the Holyoke Community Preservation Act, um, like intent to apply forms. It's, it's a form that says, you, we have this project coming along. And we put in for some of the site costs that wouldn't necessarily be covered at the full percentage by MSBA because it can cover those open space items. So that goes to the CPA. I mean, there is some question, um, right at this, with their round of funding right now, however it works for CPA, the project may have to wait for us to apply for until it becomes eligible. There's some question whether or not it's eligible right now since it's not, since we actually haven't broken ground. But that is something that we have that paperwork in. Um, our project manager and architect helped us with all that paperwork. And it was submitted to the CPA committee for that.
That's something that would have to be resubmitted on an annual basis?
So my understanding is we submit it, we would submit it once for the project, but they could do the disbursements out over multiple years. Um, so if they don't have 1.5 million or whatever it may be sitting there, they could commit out certain money throughout the life of the project.
And just one final question. So I know about those two offsetting, um, possibilities. Um, I know that, um, the, I believe it was the town administrator or the mayor of East Hampton came before city council. There's a number of other opportunities. Is there a way that we could, um, I contacted representative at our school department just to see if we can get a list of these other opportunities that we would have, um, that we would be likely to qualify for, that East Hampton has qualified for, maybe even that the city of Chicopee has qualified for, since they built their two high schools. Um, is there a, a plan that we can put that list in front of the public?
Yeah, I mean, it's, there's a challenge with that though. And I will say it's every intent for everyone involved in the project to apply for those. But it, um, I know Representative Vega and Councilor Lisi met with someone from Congressman Neal's office. And, um, Councilor McGee and someone else met with people in Lieutenant Governor and Governor's Office. And no one's really ready to play ball yet until they say, your project's moving along. I mean, we can find out what East Hampton did. Um, Chicopee is a totally, I mean, Chicopee's projects were over 10 years old. They were under a totally different agreement with the School Building Authority. It was a different funding mechanism that was used for them. And the fact that one was a comprehensive school changes a lot of it too. But I mean, until we say that we as a community are ready to finance, then it's hard to go after these. I mean, I can give the example, East Hampton, I think they had mentioned that the average homeowner and either Aaron or Alex and Kirk, if I'm wrong, was supposed to pay six something and it's down to four something now, right? Um, so I mean, they were through other funding sources, they were able to reduce their, their override amount by about $200. I mean, and that's our hope. I mean, the hope is to go out and find these mechanisms. But it's hard to apply for, no one wants you applying for a grant until you say what you're gonna use it for.
Yeah, I, I guess my, my hope would be that, just like applying for college scholarships, you know, what's available? And, you know, I may not be eligible to apply today, but what's available for me to apply to? Because if, I, I think if we could present that, that would, that would give some people assurance that actually this is more likely than not, we get some or most of these things. And it would help people digest this, this big bill that we have in front of us.
Yeah, I think that's helpful. And I think that's why Mayor LaChapelle was invited in to talk about her experience in East Hampton. They were presenting an estimate to the voters that is now a couple hundred dollars less than it was when they took a vote. And I think what's been exciting about this progress is that when we started this, we were telling folks on an average $190,000 house, their taxes would go up $250 because of the million dollar commitment and because of better long-term interest rates and an improved bond rating. We've seen that go from 250 to an average estimate of 129 for the year. And it won't get worse than that with the assurances of the contract. That's worst case scenario, conservative estimates. And so the hope is, and the expectation is, and I know a lot of residents still think that if this passes on November 5th, we'll get a new tax bill on November 6th. Any tax increase is still two years, two years away at least, until we actually issue the debt, which allows the administration, working with the council, um, to go after both state and federal grants, to be able to figure out the CPA process. And there may be grants that exist five years from now that don't exist today. And it's not to say that we won't continue to pursue those opportunities as well. But I think, I speak for every municipal official when I say, we want to keep this tax increase as low as possible. In any economic development project in the pipeline, property value growth, new investment in the city isn't accounted for, um, as well when we look at the, the projections for growth there, when you look at the number of projects in the pipeline. So, uh, I think in terms of the affordability of this project, when you, you know, compare two brand new middle schools to even the cost of renovation, that would number one, be more expensive and number two, not be eligible for MSBA reimbursement. If this doesn't pass on, on November 5th, then we're left with, with, with very few options. We're gonna have to make do with, with the, with the spaces that we have and get, get to the back of the line. And I, I know you know that, I know folks at home that are listening or watching it back. I think it's important to dispel, um, a lot of the falsehoods being spread around the city and on social media. And it's because of questions like yours, seeking facts that I think are important. And I would just encourage folks to keep an open mind over the next two weeks and, and ask questions and look at the documents and don't be shy about any concerns you have. It's better to make an informed vote than a, than a vote that isn't grounded in any basis.
And I think just with the timeline like the mayor mentioned, just remember this project, we were invited into the project's sequence in November 2012 is when the MSBA board invited us in. And prior to that, I think we submitted four statements of interest, four, right Liz, three or four, um, each year before. So we've been trying since maybe 2008 for this. So it's not, if, if we don't build now, just look at how long it took this. And there's communities like East Long Meadow that have been trying for years for a new high school. And they haven't been invited into the process at all.
Any other questions, Ms. Burnett?
So, um, referencing the letter. So I've just been getting some questions on the clarity of how it can be enforced. Um, so, you know, what if, I've been getting this question like, so what if in three years, the city council is a different makeup? And, you know, so does the, does the ultimate power of enforcing this mechanism, like, who does that lie with, right? So does it lie with the city council? Do we need, do us need to take a vote on this? And then they take a vote on that? And then mainly, what's the assurance that, like I said, if in five years, the city council has a different makeup, that they'll keep allotting this million to offset? So that's some of the questions I've been getting back is like, even though the letter clearly states it's a million dollars annually for the life of the bond, people are still questioning the enforceability of, of it. So what can we like, talking points on that and how to? So what can we like, talking points on that and how to ensure that we are actually putting this million dollars in, right? Like who's the final decision? Like how does that happen?
I would, I would say a couple of things and anyone's welcome to, to chime in. So I mean, at, at the end of the day, any, any mayor, any city council is going to want to have the million dollar contribution from the school department or else that million dollars is immediately passed on to the taxpayers. And so the mayor by right in the budget has a hundred percent authority to cut a million dollars or before it even goes to the city council based on making sure that the contribution goes um, to the project. And then number two, the city council at the end of the day has uh, the power to cut the school department's budget as they have before, dollar for dollar based on the reimbursement for, for the school project. And so it's, I think it's less a concern about the mayor or city council makeup and more a concern about who is the superintendent, you know, five or 10 years from now and, and will they want to contribute a million dollars? And so it's really up to city officials at the end of the day to keep, keep enforcing this commitment over the next 30-year period.
I would also, I would just also add to that. I mean, the letter, I mean, the, I think we did feel like it was important for the school committee to take a vote um, on this tonight. Whether receivership or not, I think it's important that, you know, I, um, I know the state believes that elected officials should have, you know, um, a voice on something like these matters. And um, that's one of the reasons why we felt important to have a vote tonight. Um, if the district, you know, we, we obviously don't know lo- how long the district will be in receivership. But during that period of time, the, the commissioner is making it very clear in his letter that he supports this, in fact encourages this because he believes that this is really important for the future viability of the um, educational programming in the city. And then beyond that, you know, the authority will rest with the school committee. Um, and the school committee, you know, that's why I think it's symbolically, uh, it's important that the school committee, I hope takes a stance tonight that this is something important um, for us to contribute for however long, you know, for um, for the duration of this um, for the 30 years.
So on that note, I would like to make a motion that, sorry, did you want to do it?
No, just going to make a motion to take up 6A.
Yeah, I couldn't agree more.
So we have a motion to take up 6A um, for a vote. Um, you seconded, someone seconded it. Um, all those in favor? All those in favor?
I'd like a roll call on that, please.
This is just votes, go out of order.
Oh, sorry, to go out of order, my bad.
Aaron, Aaron, you're way ahead of me.
I'm sorry.
Caught me off guard on that one. Okay, any opposed? Abstain? Alright, so um, we're gonna go ahead and take up 6A, which is the letter from the commissioner to the district in regards to the $1 million appro- is it, would it be called an appropriation of $1 million towards that? Or how would we call it?
Anthony, what would you call it?
Uh, I would say that this is a, a mechanism in which we're going to be able to assist with the city. Um, the city's bond payment. So a large, a large portion of that, or the biggest portion of that is an agreement between the city and the schools that were, is already in place anyway. So anytime you want to make a change to that agreement, you have to get approval from the commissioner in writing. And I would say we're ahead of the game because we made the request, we told, we told the commissioner that, that um, the city is interested and the schools is interested in, in renegotiating the admin agreement that they have. And by law, it requires his approval and, and, in writing, he, he approved it.
But I'm wondering if we have to, and maybe the mayor or Devin, um, could tell me what would be the specifics in what we are voting for?
I would say that the motion would be just to uh, support the letter um, sent by the Commissioner of Elementary and Secondary Education on October 17th in regards to the um, city administrative cost services uh, between the school department and Holyoke Public Schools. And to um, support the payment um, over a 30-year period as described in the letter. You got that, Liz?
With specifying 1 million, should we specify 1 million in there so that there's no questions as to what we're?
Yeah, specify it.
Yeah, the 1 million dollar payment.
1 million, okay. Does anybody have any comments, questions? Oh, for the motion, I thought we did. Oh no, we didn't. Um, is there a, okay, we have a second. So with that being said, um, does anybody have any questions or comments on the motion? Mr. Collmore?
In the motion, it's 1 million per year, not just, not just 1 million.
Yes.
We have to specify that it's 1 million per year.
Per year for the life of the bond. I believe that's what-
That's written down. On paper.
So just, Liz, could you just read back what the motion is? If, if, I put you on the spot, didn't I?
What it was anyway.
That was shorthand. Okay, so we got the 1 million per year in there. We've got for the life of the bond, which is 30 years. Mr. Krishane.
Well, I mean, it says more than a million. I mean, that-
Taken together, these changes will provide more than 1 million.
A million.
No less than, no less than a million. Why should we reduce it to 1 million?
So is that a question?
I would say-
Got a specific wording change you want to make? And if so, where?
No less than 1 million.
So are we going to put an amendment and have to take another vote? No. So um, no less than 1 million per year for the life of the bond. I'm sorry. Any other questions, comments? Okay, so everybody knows what we're taking a vote on, right? Okay, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstain? Okay, so the motion passes unanimously. Okay, so there we have it. Alright, so moving on now.
I would like to say something about child nutrition. Um, so I-
Oh, I haven't even gotten there, but I was going to, Charlotte.
Yeah.
Cause now I'm getting hungry and I want to talk about food.
Alright, I got some stuff.
Oh, oh, really quick, just before building.
There is a forum, uh, just so people are aware, on Tuesday night. I'm just with this, it's Tuesday night, 6 o'clock at Ian White School uh, for community members. I'm sure it'll be announced later on again, but at least those people who are still listening now, it's um, more about the building project, where it is, what it went through, all that type of stuff at Ian White.
Yep, Ian White, it's 1 Jefferson Street on Tuesday, the 29th from 6 to 8 PM. Um, though it's in Ward 7, of course, it's open to the old city. Um, Todd McGee, Mr. Krishane, myself and Dennis will be kind of sharing the co-hosting responsibilities. But we encourage all those to attend and um, please come, ask questions, become more informed on the vote.
Great, excellent. So now we're going to talk about food.
Alright.
I think it's that time. Um, so Sedexo Food Service Presentation?
Can I talk about food very quickly about what Sedexo brings?
Well, you know what?
Oh yeah, just, we'll have them come up and we're going to take some questions and-
Got it.
And we'll go from there.
So this is the annual update that Sedexo is uh, required to provide the school committee. And this uh, we did this last year at this time and here we are again. So I'd wel- welcome the Sedexo team. You have this presentation in your packets.
Good evening. My name is Ashley Plant. I'm the General Manager with Sedexo and Holyoke Public Schools.
Mark Jeffrey District Manager with Sedexo.
So we are going to go over our 2019 annual report for Holyoke Public Schools. We have five pillars for student wellbeing, nutrition, achievement, environment, community and activity. And we'll be discussing some of our achievements in all five pillars that make our food service um, important for our students in Holyoke. Student wellbeing nutrition. We are one of maybe less than five school districts within the whole United States that offers district-wide breakfast in the classroom. It is a huge accomplishment to not only have breakfast in the classroom at your elementary level schools, but also in your secondary high school schools. So um, this was an accomplishment that took place last year. Dean Campus went from 16% participation to 72% participation. And Holyoke High School North had a short three-month trial of the program, a pilot uh, last year. And they went from 10% participation to an average of 51% participation in just those short three months, which was exemplary uh, for the students of both high schools. So we have a 75% district-wide participation over uh, the entire district in Holyoke. So as you know, benefits of breakfast in the classroom ensures all students have access to start their day with a nutritious breakfast. Uh, creates less behavioral problems in the classroom and it creates less trips to the nurses with hunger-related issues. Another nutrition uh, pillar was our fresh fruit and vegetable program. We applied and received approval from DESI to participate in this fresh fruit and vegetable program. Eight schools received the funding and our total program funding was 172,000. We provided fresh fruits and vegetables to our students twice a week throughout the school year. Nutrition education was provided through a fun fact, which was available through every delivery of produce to the classrooms. They were, the students were able to try exotic fruits such as kumquats, star fruit, blood oranges, as well as favorite vegetables like tri-colored pepper strip, as tri-colored carrots and pepper strips. School gardens. This was a wonderful initiative that uh, we had projected when we first took on our contract uh, three years ago. It was implemented in May of 2018, uh, 2019, I'm sorry. And the garden coordinator was hired to develop and maintain all school gardens. Three school gardens were built at Kelly, Ian White and Holyoke High North. We partnered with the Dean Transitional Students over the summer and they received hands-on gardening training to help support our gardens throughout the summer months, because we need to maintain them. And it was a wonderful partnership uh, for us. Ian White's gardens produced 50 pounds of vegetables and herbs. And some of these items were canned and showcased at their open house to show families, students and staff how to preserve the food. Kelly's gardens flourished with so- this summer and produced herbs. And students were able to taste test their produce from their own school gardens at the family meet and greet. We have projected gardens for fiscal year 20 at Peck, Lawrence, Morgan and Sullivan Schools. We received several grants last school year as well. The Eos Foundation awarded a Healthy Start Leadership Award. Uh, Holyoke High School North received $10,000 towards their breakfast in the classroom program. And that money was put into our program and we were able to purchase an actual walk-in refrigerator to store all of the produce and uh, items for that program. The Eos Healthy Start Award, we received $5,500 and $500 was distributed to 11 different schools to use at their discretion. So the principals were able to choose where they wanted that money to go, which was wonderful. Uh, the DESI Summer Eats Grant was awarded $13,000 and that money was put into our summer food service program to service our students uh, throughout the district of Holyoke in the summer months. DESI Fresh Fruit and Vegetable Grant, we had 172,000. And our Sedexo Stop Hunger Foundation, uh, we received $1,000 to support our backpack program. Financial performance for last school year, we served 662, 62,000 breakfast, 1.4 dollars in reimbursement. We served 700- Yes, 1.4 million. Yes, did I say thousand? Oh goodness, no. 1.4 million. Um, we served 779,000 lunches with 2.7 million dollars in reimbursement. Bit, uh, 5,000 dinners were served with $19,000 in reimbursement. 39,000 snacks were served for a total of 35,000 reimbursement and we had a net surplus of 550,000 dollars. All these funds were allocated to our capital improvement plan and continuing to improve and expand our program offered within the district. Our capital improvement plan last year, we invested $165,000 in new kitchen equipment. We purchased refrigerators, freezers, ovens, kettles and steamers. And the walk-in fridge was purchased for Holyoke High School North. Um, and the majority of that project was funded through the EO grant that we had received. Our community. We have a wonderful backpack program and we partner with the Food Bank of Western Massachusetts. 200 backpacks are sent out weekly to students throughout the district. And we provide non-perishable food for students and their families. Our back-to-school celebration, we partner with Holyoke Safe Neighborhood Initiative to supply students with backpacks and school supplies for the upcoming school year. We had wonderful weather this year, so it was a wonderful event um, with all of our students. And it was great to see everyone come out for that. Um, and we provided a barbecue lunch to all our participants. And we also provide holiday baskets during Thanksgiving and Christmas to Holyoke families that are in need. Our activity, we had our annual Future Chef Event last year. Uh, we had nine contestants this year, which was up from seven the previous year. Uh, we participated in the culinary cook-off competition showcasing their own healthy Fiesta Fit recipe. And it was a wonderful night um, where the students really got to shine and it's a great event for them. We had our CPR certification, so all our cooks are now trained and certified for HEATS, uh, Heart Saver CPR and AED. And that took place in June of this year. The next slide is our five-year food service goals and objectives timeline. You can kind of look at this at your leisure. Um, this is what we've projected to achieve in all the five years of our contract. And the next slide is also that. And then it goes to our fiscal year 20 nutrition service solution mindset. Um, we have several items listed for our goals and objectives in our fiscal year 20. School gardens, we are one of them. Number two, to build and maintain four additional gardens. Um, we've also touched on the last slide, alternate backpack program. This is something that we've partnered with the nursing department to see that a lot of our students at the high school level don't participate in our backpack program because there is that stigma if they are seen with that bag. So we are partnering with the nurses to get an alternative backpack program in their schools. So we'll have our food that we would provide them in a backpack, but it's in the nurse's room. So they can go in a safe space and collect the food and maybe put it in their own bag or however they want to transport it so they get the necessary food. Cause right now, we're only serving about two students at Holyoke High North and we just, we know the need is there. So we're trying different alternatives to get our students the food that they need for the weekends. Um, another one is Taste Forward Program. We have new menu marketing initiatives at both high schools. One is at Holyoke High Dean Campus. We started that day one. Um, it's a great twist on new items that we have. Um, you know, as many of you know, we had some, a menu item that didn't really go over well this past week. Um, however, I'm sorry, the broccoli. However, we, um, it prompted a conversation. And you know, some things you try, they don't work. It just doesn't work. So we heard, um, you know, the concerns, we addressed them immediately. And now there's more choices and different options that have started at that location. As well as, you know, looking at our menus to make sure that we are providing things that our students want to eat. Um, our Go Green Initiative, we're working with schools to develop a recycling program within the cafeteria. And this program, we started at Dean, we have recyclable materials. Um, currently instead of styrofoam trays, we have a brown boat. So making sure that all the students know exactly how to recycle and why we're doing this um, is a great way to kind of start this green initiative that we really want to see throughout the district. So we have lots of things um, that we are tackling this school year. And I just want to thank everyone for taking the time to meet with us and listen to some of our accomplishments um, that we've had with our nutrition program.
Alright, anybody, I know, Charlie, you are first.
I am.
Go for it.
Alright, so you said you were hungry before, right? I actually brought a Holyoke High School breakfast. So this is our breakfast today. It was a Land O' Lakes cheese, uh, sun-made raisins, a juice and a granola bar. Now you might be asking, how much sugar is in that? 47 grams. That is 11.2 teaspoons. That is deplorable. You are eat, you want to eat 47 grams of sugar for breakfast? I don't think that's very healthy. Um, I realize the need for a breakfast in the classroom, but it should not be 47 grams. If we look back on page three, you can see Egobites. Those are actually two servings of Egobites, 18 grams of sugar each serving. If we look at this king-size Kit Kat bar, it is actually only 28 grams of sugar. So you are getting more sugar in a breakfast than a Kit Kat bar. Thank you so much. So there is a difference between natural sugar and processed sugar. But I will like to say that these are dried fruit, which is- but I will like to say that these are dried fruit, which is not as healthy as natural fruit. Not only that, but there was not a natural fruit option this morning.
You come up to a microphone.
That is.
My name's Deanna Barker. I'm the registered dietitian for Sedexo. I do agree with this breakfast today. It does have a lot of sugar in it. I'm not going to say that it does not. However, today might have been the combination of what we were serving. I know we have another option as well than just the cinnamon toast.
That option does not have any nutritional information on it.
So I'm gonna just have- Okay, hold on. Time out, sorry. I'm gonna have you guys respond to her. And Charlotte, just let them respond, and then after, if, I'll call you back again. I just want to make sure the, the meeting runs smoothly and everybody can hear exactly what the responses are to your concerns that you did bring forward.
So four out of five days a week, we have fresh fruit available. Usually on Mondays, we'll have like a raisin or a craisin. I agree, some of them have a little bit more sugar than the fresh fruit. It's not as natural. A hundred percent agree. Some kids like them more. I, probably why. It depends. We always offer one option, and then we offer another option as well. Today, I'm not sure a hundred percent what the other option was. They do not have to take all those things together, which would be less sugar. If they did take them all together, yes, it is a lot, many grams of sugar.
Okay.
I think the committee needs to know that everything that we serve in the program is federally regulated and one hundred percent compliant. Now, we can challenge what those, what those regulations are. As I stood here or sat here last year, and we talked about breakfast in the classroom, we talked about the expansion of breakfast in the classroom. One of the challenges that we have as the provider is finding suitable products to be able to be served in a portion size in the nutrient, nutrient analysis side, in package to be able to serve in the classroom. Nothing is going to replace scratch cooking in the school district. And so you see that we embarked last year on a major, almost two-hundred-thousand-dollar investment in putting steamers and additional cooking equipment in our schools. And scratch cooking, if you look for two thousand and twenty, is number one on our list. Back to basics, bringing scratch cooking back in our schools. Nothing is going to replace that. But you have to replace the infrastructure that was aged when the program was in a deficit situation. When we inherited the program three years ago, you had a major financial scenario going in our schools, and we, we did not have the equipment to be able to produce on our own. Nothing is going to replace being able to cook the products ourselves. And that is the goal of the district. That's, should be the goal of this committee, and I applaud you in bringing this to our attention because it is something we need to address as a group. And we're walking up a staircase. We can't get from stair one to stair fifteen all at the same time. But I want you to be assured that we're climbing that staircase. We may be on step four or five, but we're not going to stop till we get to the top of that stairs, and that everything will be served in this district from scratch. That's our goal, and that's why we're investing in our schools.
Okay, I'm just gonna go ahead with Mr. Sheehan, then I know I have Ms. Brunel. I have Ms. Feliciano Sims. I know you, you are gonna have a comment. I just want to make sure the rest of the school committee members as well have their opportunity. So, Mr. Sheehan.
And just for the record, I mean, Sedexo has been with the district longer than three years.
Yes.
You come in, you come into, when we, when we came in here three years ago, but-
When this management-
No.
When, when our management team-
What company do you work for?
I work for Sedexo.
What was here before?
Sedexo was here.
No matter who the management team is, you're responsible, right?
Well, I'm not personally responsible.
You are an agent of the company.
I am.
The company has been here longer than three years.
That's correct, and that's why Sedexo, um-
But it can't be this versus that. It was-
The manager who was here in the past is not, no longer with Sedexo.
Still Sedexo, though. So let's not make it seem like there were all these problems with the different company, and then you came in to fix these. It's been Sedexo throughout since probably two thousand thirteen?
We were on second, to ten.
Ten, okay. So two thousand ten is when Sedexo came in.
That's correct.
All right, Ms. Brunel.
So as a mom with two young kids in the elementary schools and Holyoke Public Schools, you know, I'm flabbergasted by the amount of juice boxes that come home with my son every day when he's not even allowed to drink juice at home. So I think one of the simplest, easiest solutions is water instead of juice. Makes sense. But then more importantly, like, like the, the packaged breakfasts that are heated in plastic, that's not okay, right? We shouldn't be heating up stuff in throwaway plastic. I'd like to see some changes with biodegradable utensils. I'd really like to see some of the plastic come offline that we're wasting on a daily basis, and then why, they don't even need to be wrapped in plastic. Put them in a little thing, and a kid can grab one, right? So little things like that. Let me finish. I got a lot to say. But like, you know, yogurt, okay? Yogurt is a healthy option, but not when it's Trix yogurt or some flavored, like, kitty yogurt. Like, let's get some Greek yogurt or some non-flavored, you know, like, just healthier options. Like, my kids eat breakfast at home, but you know, unfortunately, a lot of kids in the district can't afford breakfast at home. So like, when they come to school, they're looking for that nutritious starch of their day, and being bogged down with forty-six grams of sugar is not the best nutritional start to our day. On a side conversation, I'd love to talk to you guys a little bit more about what I hear from my kids at Metcalf and some of the things that, not necessarily that they just don't like, right? Because you're not going to ever please every kid, but just some of the consistent quality issues that I'm getting feedback on, like rock-hard grilled cheeses, cold food, stuff like that, which all ultimately falls back into the hands of you guys. So one thing that I would really like to see that I don't think is in your presentation is student surveys. How are you feeling about the breakfast you're provided? How are you feeling about the lunch you're provided? And I mean, sure, it might hit some national tick, but we can do better than that, right? Like, we all know we can do better than that. So it's just owning it, taking responsibility, that for a good majority of our students, these are the only meals they get. So let's just make them as healthy and nutritious, and giving them the energy they need. And especially water, like, I don't know if you guys are aware, but Metcalf, you can't drink the water because there's lead in the water. So like, it'd be great to get some bottles of water around the school, maybe even a water bubbler that our kids can drink on a daily basis. You know, things like that. So just relaying those concerns over to you.
Thank you. No, and they're all valid concerns, of course. I'm a mom myself. Deanna is as well. I mean, we have kids. We know the importance. We, the USDA requires us to hit, yes, certain benchmarks. And though we still fall under, we are a hundred percent compliant with our menus and the products that we serve. They may not be, when you pull them all together, they're still compliant. Even Charlotte's breakfast that she showed us today, they're still meet all of the nutritional requirements that the USDA, USDA requires. However, you know, we do do focus groups with our students to see what we'd like to improve upon, because every, no one's perfect. We can always improve, and we strive every day to make improvements. Water, eight-ounce water. We provide eight-ounce bottles of water at all of our schools. If it's not happening at Metcalf, I don't know why, and we can fix that tomorrow. I mean, these are great valid points, and I want you to know that your concerns are being heard, and I am not someone that hears them and says, okay, I'll do something. I act on them immediately. So we can absolutely do that, and we can look at different breakfast products. Like, to Mark's point, some of our items we are constrained with, like, can I make scrambled eggs? I can't, you know, I can't. But can we try to find different alternatives? Absolutely. We have egg and cheese sandwiches. We have little egg sliders that we give them. We have omelets. You know, we do try to provide these items for our kids the best that we possibly can.
Sorry, got me there. Ms. Feliciano Sims?
Yeah, hi. Thank you, guys, for coming. I think, I think we're all in this conversation, right? Like, healthy options, eating better for our kids, finding solutions. I was really intrigued that that was brought in, because when we went to a couple of the MAC conferences, in the morning breakfast was like a parfait, right? Like, an easy, um, go-to container parfait, and then they had honey and they had granola. Some of them had just fresh fruits with something like that. I would love to see those options. And again, because you do have the garden program, the smoothies, they had smoothies that were made from their local gardens and stuff like that. I'm just curious, you said that there is a focus group, and then you also said that part of your five-year goal is to have a student ambassador council where students meet. You met in this year, but then there's nothing else for the next five years. So FY twenty, there's nothing there.
That's just a start, yeah.
So, so, okay, so then who's part of that group? And like, how does, um, I'm sorry, I forget your name.
Yeah, Charlotte.
Charlotte, sorry, sorry. Yeah. How does Charlotte, like, somebody who's very passionate about, like, what is coming into her schools, what are students? Yeah, yeah, absolutely. And I find that it's huge, because even in our family, right? Like, in our family, we were like, oh my God, the amount of sodium. And when we were seeing the same thing, like a slice of pizza at the public schools, that tomato sauce is considered a vegetable with like nine hundred milligrams of salt. It was like, I can't allow my child who is a gluten allergy, who has, you know, our family history, maybe has diabetes and all this other stuff, like, I can't risk my child going into an avenue exactly like that. So I commend you for this, because it has been something in our personal family too that we've taken apart of. And I just want to know, like, how does she or somebody else who's as passionate about food justice and, you know, food concerns, how do they get involved, especially because you say you have a focus group going?
Yes, so we partner with our principals to see how we can get into the schools, and they sometimes choose the students that come to these focus groups. But, you know, we can try different avenues and see, you know, we actually have one scheduled November thirteenth, but it's student government with Holyoke High North. I'm not sure if you're at the Dean Campus or the North Campus.
I'm at the North.
Okay, so, you know, we, we are actively working with our students and having these conversations with them.
Mr. Burks.
Thank you. So I thought I heard you say something about the transitions program, and you're offering them more options when you go down there. And part of the thing about the transitions program also is that that's an adult program. I've seen some of their lunches where they get Metcalf-sized portions. So are you going to also be bringing them larger portions, which match the nutritional needs of those adults that go to those programs and who also, some of them struggling? That's the only two meals of the day that they get.
So the nutritional standards for the National School Lunch Program, it goes from grades nine to twelve. I understand those students are eighteen to twenty-two years old. So they're outside the realm of grades nine through twelve. However, if you look at the CACFP, the Child and Adult Care Feeding Program, and it has an adult program, those standards, nutritional standards, match the ninth through twelfth grade levels. So that two ounces of protein is consistent with whether you're a sixth grader or a twenty-two-year-old student. It doesn't make sense, because as an adult, I would probably want two pieces of pizza as well. However, the USDA requirements want you to fill your plate ninety percent up with fresh fruits and vegetables and fill up on that as opposed to two slices of pizza. So those entree portions are consistent with the USDA regulations. And we have to be compliant with those regulations, because if we are not in compliance, federal reimbursements gets taken away.
You're in compliance for going over. I can understand not meeting the requirements, but going over a little bit and giving an adult a portion that fits their nutritional need for the day, I don't think is not in compliance. I think not giving them what they need would be not in compliance, and giving them a little bit extra to students who possibly need it.
Yeah, I would, we would love to do that. Reimbursement would not be given to the district if we exceed those nutrient requirements. Maybe there's another alternative that can be, that is, that is an extremely sensitive population, and so we need to take a look at that particular site. That's the only one we have like it in Holyoke. Maybe something can be done above and beyond the traditional program to supplement something. I'm not exactly sure. We will look into that. We have to be compliant with the regulations for what is served, but then beyond, after that service takes place, maybe we look at something else that can possibly be done. Because I'm, I'm six foot four, and two ounces doesn't cut it for me either. And I, I do know where my next meal is coming from, so this population does not. So it's very sensitive to us and very, that's why we have the backpacker program, because we want to feed on the weekends for students that don't have enough.
That was gonna be my question is, can you stand on that?
Hold on one.
Sorry.
Quick answer, yes.
Okay. Anything else, Mr. Burks?
Ah, for now, I think he said that he would look into some other, or some alternatives to give them something else also. See what happens with that.
All right, excellent. Ms. Brunel.
All right, um, I want to thank you both for talking from the perspective of a mother. It is really hard to get high schoolers to get their parents to, you know, speak up about their food. I would also like to say, I did not do any witchcraft or anything to get this magic number of forty-seven. This was a baggie that came together, and this was a single bar that was within the Sedexo bag. So there was nothing, there was no calculations I did before to say, what am I going to get the most sugar with? This is normal. This is average. This is just what I grabbed at eight o'clock in the morning.
It's, yeah, no, it's, it's there, and I, we have Primero Edge software. It's a nutritional database that we plug in all of our menus to, and it spits out exactly if you're, it's green, if it's good, and you meet all your requirements, and not only daily, but weekly, because the program is run on a weekly basis.
I was gonna say, and that could be part of the challenge, because to your point, this is one particular day, but the USDA allows us to average it over the course of a five-day period. Maybe shorter one day and more on another day, and I'm, I'm not so sure that's-
But why should my nutrition be an average?
That's, that's the law, and that's-
That's the law.
That's the regulation, but that doesn't mean that regulation can't be talked about.
Right. I just would like to say that my nutrition should not be an average. My nutrition should not be made on a five-day scale. If I miss a day, let's say I miss the rest of the four days. This is what Sedexo gave me. Yes.
Mr. Sheehan.
So I'm looking at the slide. I think the third one, the one with the egos on it. We're talking about participation. I think Breakfast in the Classroom is great. I think it's one of the best programs that E.O.'s funds. I think it's great that we're doing it. So when we're talking about participation, now, obviously, the fact that she has that food, that's participation, right?
Correct.
I guess she took it out. Have you gone through and looked through trash cans in the morning?
There is, yes, there is waste, absolutely, but you're gonna have waste with any program.
No, no, and I know that lunch you'd have waste, but like, I mean, how much? And all of that, Holyoke High North, you had fifty-one percent in three months, but like, how much of that is actually being wasted?
Are you talking about the food that is not taken or the food that is taken?
I, I mean, do you go around and look, every once in a while, look through tra, look at, just look in a classroom trash can?
Of course.
And see if there's tons of-
We mon, yes, the, we monitor this program heavily. I have managers in our schools on a daily basis. We monitor breakfast. We monitor lunch. We monitor our after-school snack program, our dinner program, all the programs that we run. And I understand, like, to be honest with you, most of the kids will take-
Yeah, of course.
Most of the kids will take this bag, because this is a reimbursable breakfast technically, and they take the juice, and then they throw the rest of it in the trash. I'm gonna be very honest with you, because most of the kids don't want to eat. Am I wrong? Most of the kids don't, just don't want to eat in the morning, and they just take the juice.
And everything else gets thrown out.
Sometimes, yes.
So is running this breakfast in the classroom model really the best thing for Holyoke then?
Yes. I would say a hundred percent yes.
Okay.
I would, I would say yes. Also, what we need to strive for is making the products ourselves. The yogurt, the granolas. We're, we're partnering with Jeff Granola, for example, in Long Meadow. He makes the granola himself right here in, in, in Western Meadow. His house is in Long Meadow, though. But people like that, we have to do it ourselves, and we're in a position where we're right on the cusp of being able to do it ourselves, and that's what's gonna make the difference. The format, to your point, it's a great program. It's bringing the, the product to the students. Now let's deal with the products that we're bringing to the students, and let's do it ourselves, and nothing is gonna replace that.
I guess, I guess my concern is if you're ju, if you're just counting participation, that someone's picking up the bag, taking out the juice, and throwing it out, then that, I mean-
Sounds counterproductive, but what that participation is doing, and I don't want to see that child throw out that meal any more than anybody else does. But it's bringing in hundreds of thousands of dollars into the program that is now being reinvested into steamers and kettles and, and ovens in our schools to provide the infrastructure to be able to make those, those muffins ourselves. So at some point, you're going, that, that curve is gonna change, whereby, yes, you're getting participation in the classroom, but they're not throwing the food out.
So where on, on the grid that we looked at with all the, the benchmarks, wh, where is that?
We're into, we're into year two for that. So if you, if you look at back to the basics, so look, look at this, this year twenty. So that will carry on with fiscal year twenty-one and fiscal year twenty-two.
So by fiscal year twenty-one, we be making the majority of our items for the breakfast in, in the classroom program?
I'm sorry.
By fiscal year twenty-one, will, will we be making the majority of the products for our breakfast in the classroom?
I can't say the majority, but a significant more than is being done today.
Well, it doesn't look like anything's being made today.
That's the whole point.
Absolutely.
Okay, so significant more could be one item.
Well, no, we're in fiscal year twenty. Let's not discount what's gonna take place during this school year. And then by the end of fiscal year twenty-one, by the end of fiscal year twenty-two, by the end of this contract cycle, that is our goal, that we want to be as self-sufficient as possible.
So what is the, for FY twenty, since it's an X for everything, what is the goal, the actual goal? The actual goal in FY twenty to have for breakfast in the cla-, for an item in breakfast in the classroom?
I, I, I can't answer. You can answer that question.
Yeah. So, at the high school level, um, we would love to have muffins, fresh baked muffins instead of the Otis Spunk Meyer that we're currently, it's a frozen product. It comes in. That's something that's easily bakeable, um, and compliant. Uh, they're currently doing that in Springfield with their Culinary Nutrition Center. And it's something, um, that is, I've done it before at Central High School before the Culinary Nutrition Center. I can do it. Uh, there's that. And then the yogurt parfaits. The difficult thing with the yogurt parfaits is getting appropriate packaging that fits in their bags. Because if you have a classroom of thirty kids or twenty-five kids, trying to get all of that without the actual container squishing and being a mess is, is difficult. So, getting proper packaging for that first is, yogurt parfaits are super simple. We can do them.
So, is the fact the equipment is not there right now to make these muffins?
I do, I have, yeah, I don't have this, I don't have the labor, I don't have the equipment. I don't have, I don't have the recipes. I mean, there's a lot that goes into it. It has to be compliant. If you're gonna make a scratch-based product, it has to go through USDA. There, there's a lot that goes into it.
But that's one of the goal, muffins are a goal for FY twenty.
Muffins are a goal. Yes. Charlotte, I want you to see a muffin. This fiscal year.
Okay. All right, so I'm gonna move along now and I'm gonna go with Ms. Brunet. Do you have a comment?
Yeah, so I just wanted to comment when you were discussing the transitions program with, uh, Dennis, just to see like if the backpack program could be expanded or, you know, do we need to like create a food pantry specifically for the schools? That's something that us parents and school community members can just be advocating for and having a drop-off location? Like, is that something that would be allowed? And then, um, to your point of wanting to make more in the district, um, you know, hopefully, if we have two new buildings with two new kitchens,
Right.
you'd be able to provide a better nutritional quality to the district as a whole. Um, but then my other point to the breakfast being thrown away. So, is there a way to have a bin in the room for that granola that wasn't even opened? Or for, um, you know, the cheese stick? I mean, I, I love cheese sticks. My kids love cheese sticks. But like, is there just a way to like try to recapture a little bit of that so we're not wasting so much?
Currently, we do have shared tables and Charlotte, you can, do you have that at near school? Because we do have that.
We don't, actually.
So, that's part of our breakfast program. It's on the Quick Start Guide of your teacher's front back, actually. But, so it's in all the schools. There should be a shared table.
How are we implementing that? How are we making sure that that's implemented if it's not happening in her classroom?
That's a great point. We need to, we do audit our classrooms, um, and we need to continue to make sure.
Like, is that on, is that on administration to discuss with their teachers to make sure that they're doing it, like?
Should be.
All righty, so next on the line is Ms. Williams. I thought you told me you had a comment.
I didn't know I had anything to say, but, um.
I'm sorry.
My, as a single mom, I fed my two sons breakfast at home. However, if we're required as a state to feed the children, all I need to say is, um, you need to feed them healthy food.
Absolutely, agree.
All right, Mr. Burks.
I'm going back to the, the importance, the importance of breakfast in the classroom. And we're talking about waste and I also want to, um, say that I've seen children who kind of rack up on some of those things so that they can take it home and have it. Not everyone is so lucky to just have food at their house and get to the school and only take the juice and toss the rest away. You know, and some of the children are looking to take that and have it throughout the day and all that stuff. I think that, uh, the breakfast in the classroom is incredibly important. It's good to have. And I think about those children, um, also, you know, I've seen it. I've seen them rack up on cereals and things like that because they might not have anything else. So, if it's only a few, it's still, uh, they need to survive. So, I think that breakfast in the classroom has been a good program.
Ms. Valiciano Sims?
Yeah, no, um, I, I'll be really quick because Erin really did touch on a lot of that that I wanted to talk about was like, um, putting a container or somebody who can stand and saying, hey, this can be donated, um, to somebody else or given to the backpack program. It's really interesting that you said that you monitor, um, the food that's being thrown out because about two years ago, um, a program, um, that we were able to do at, um, Lauren's school, we watched the lunch menus and what kids were eating and were, were not eating. And it was over seventy-five percent of the food that was thrown away. I mean, milks were not touched because again, kids were like, well, I'm, I'm lactose intolerant. I don't have an option other than X, Y, and Z. Um, I'm gluten, I have a gluten allergy, I can't eat this, and all they give me is this option. So, it's just really interesting. Like I said, I think food justice has been, it's been coming around. It's a hot topic. It's a conversation I think parents across the board need to be having with everybody and also with, you know, with you guys. And I do, I understand it's very hard, um, on you guys and all the, um, federal requirements and stuff like that. But again, like I, like I've always said, like, right, our kids are not numbers. And it's just like, here we start fighting, you know, the fight here and then we move it on to the, to our lawmakers and everything else. And it's just like, again, I, again, Charlotte, I really condemn you, you know, I really appreciate you for coming in saying like, yeah, I'm this young kid and I'm socially aware, so. Kudos to you.
And Mr. Collmar.
Yeah, excuse me. Last year when you were here, you mentioned you were gonna have a big new warehouse in West Springfield, I mean, in Springfield and, uh.
That, that, that opened this year, yes. It opened in April, the end of April.
And have you seen any improvement in getting our food services due to Holyoke?
But it hasn't started in Holyoke yet. Um, Springfield is just getting their launch off the ground. Once that is completed, then they will open up two other school districts. And so, that Culinary Center opened up at the end of April and they're still working out the Kings in Springfield before they spread it to Holyoke. But it, it has opened and it's a magnificent facility. If anybody wants to tour it, speak to Ashley and we should make an arrangement to tour that facility, uh, in Springfield. It's truly, um, beautiful. It's wonderful.
Awesome. Oh, did some, oh, go ahead, Mr. Collmar.
How much utilization are we gonna be able to get out of that facility?
I can't answer that question yet because, um, we, we of course want to make this school district as self-sufficient as possible. Um, I'm not sure what we're gonna get out of the center yet, but they're making the muffins, uh, themselves there. Ashley has a desire to make, instead of transporting those muffins in Springfield, if we can make them here, all to the better. We want to may be as self-sufficient as possible. We're not sure yet what support that center is gonna be for us. But it is a state-of-the-art, uh, facility that is producing salads and sandwiches and, and, um, uh, pastry, uh, breakfast items, um, for, for Springfield. And if, if at some point they can do it for Holyoke, that's our, that's our goal.
Okay, great. Mr. Sheehan.
So, I will say, I think that food service and busing are probably two conversations that get some of the most passionate and robust conversations, um, sometimes at school committee meetings. But, uh, I'm hoping, um, that we have the same type of conversation. We talk about data in a few minutes. But I do want to say that we are very appreciative for the work that you do, things around. We've experienced it with the Rising Stars dinners, with the other things you do for the community, whenever you are called on and asked for that things are done. So, don't think that, that the questions and these things come up that we are not appreciative for all those things that you give back to the district and how you help the community because we know it's there. Um, and we also know that this is kind of a, a struggle with the federal government, um, with these requirements and, uh, maybe we roll back every other regulation. You would have thought we would have rolled back these.
Maybe we should.
You can pollute all your waterways, but you can't have a cookie. Um, but, uh, but I, I think that, uh, I think it's important just to know that we are appreciative for the other things that you do, but we do have a lot more room to make up. And it seems like maybe there are students that voices aren't being heard. And I know it's hard to cater to a menu for a thousand kids, but just something, I don't know, someone we can think differently a little bit about things or that someone's doing somewhere differently just to accommodate more of those groups. I don't know. It's, I don't need a response. It's just more of a.
But I think, I think it's a great point. And, um, we were part of a survey, a nationwide survey that talked about food waste in schools with the Child Nutrition Program. And I'm getting the feeling in this room that I think that maybe, um, we can pilot some things in this district, uh, partner with Desi to let us try several different things and just see if we can't change that, 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 that needle and change that course. Um, it was changed now. That does not mean it has to be the same in the future. I think it's well overdue for an overhaul, uh, of that program. I can fill this room with dieticians who can analyze a menu and come up with each individual, um, breakdown of what that, of what that meal consisted of or what that recipe consisted of. And I think that, um, working, um, with Desi, I think we have an opportunity to, um, to pilot some things. Certainly, there's enough energy in the room to do it.
And just, I, I would be interested to hear and I don't mean to put you on the spot, Charlotte. But it, what if, what would be your ideal pickup from the bag?
What, pickup?
Like, if, what would be your ideal, if, if you were participa-, if you were having breakfast in the classroom?
I wasn't.
For, for you personally, what would be your ideal three or four items to pick up? Knowing that they can only put certain things that, know, anything you want in there, but knowing that it has to fit in that bag.
So, I would put bite-sized fruit, fresh fruit into the bag because there are kids with braces and retainers who cannot have the fresh fruit. Um, I would.
That's a very good point.
Yes, perhaps keep the string cheese, um, and maybe substitute this with a water.
Okay.
All right, Mr. Dr. Zrake.
I'm gonna be, I'm gonna be quick. First of all, I, I do, um, this has been, I, I just want to say, um, that I know how much of a lift the breakfast in the classroom is at the high school level and I really appreciate Sedexo's work there. I mean, we're one of very few school systems that even does, uh, breakfast in the classroom. So, I do want to acknowledge that like that's a significant, significant lift. And, um, and I'm, I'm really proud that we can be one of the few districts in the state of Massachusetts that has taken that on at both our high school campuses and acro-, well, across our many high school programs. Um, I, I, um, and to echo what, uh, Mr. Sheehan said, I would agree, you know, Sedexo's been a strong partner. That being said, I, Charlotte, I'm really proud of you because, uh, this is what I've long wanted in the school system is, you know, students to, um, have a strong voice, but to be able to do so in an articulate, articulate, provide evidence, and you did that today. You brought evid-, you brought evidence with you, which is, um, pretty remarkable. And, uh, I'm, so I'm really proud of that. Um, and I, I've gotten to know you, uh, on the Student Advisory Committee. You're very passionate. I love that passion. Don't ever lose that passion for what you think is right. I do think it's a, it's a learning opportunity for us because breakfast in the classroom is still really new at the high school level. And, you know, we're, and it's really new across the district over the last two to three years. We can be better. And, you know, I know there's a ton of constraints that I don't even know the extent of that you spoke to. But I think it's important to listen to our kids. I, I, I have, I have, uh, I have my student advisory group every, um, every few weeks and food comes up every time. They have, we have op-, we have open mic and an open mic. Um, food always comes up from the high school students. So, I wonder whether there's a way, um, for you, Ashley, to meet with a group. Maybe Charlotte can help recruit some students that represent like the different cross-sections of the high school to get some feedback on a regular basis just on, you know, um, food choices both. I, because I, you know, lunch, and I, I know it's hard to please everybody, but I think getting the voices of students more regularly is super important. If there's one outcome I would love to see is if we could have a regular, if you could meet regularly or members of your team with the young people at the high school, I think that would be the most powerful next step. So, um, but I, I love this. I think the feedback is great. I know we've got a lot of notes. Um, and, um, uh, you know, I, I, Charlotte, keep that passion and we're gonna need your, um, vo-, the voice. For our kids in Holyoke, food is so much more important than most districts have ever been associated across the state. The issues of food insecurity are real. And so, the, the room for error, while we may just say it's just the lunch program, for Holyoke, it's more than just the lunch and breakfast program. It is the only meal that a lot of our kids get, um, and so the stakes are high.
Okay, so we're not done yet, okay? So, I'm gonna be the ending to this one. Um, just, uh, a few things. Again, Charlotte, thank you very much, um, for for voicing your concerns and the concerns of some of your, the students in your school. Um, first, I want to start off in regards to the backpack program and how we talked about, you talked about only serving two children or two students currently at this time. Um, I'm gonna, at the high school. And going right back to the same thing again, something that I've been very vocal about is using the student as your middleman to deliver the product. Where, again, if we're talking about stigma, that is stigmatizing. So, why are we not delivering it to the home? So, that's one of the things that I was talking with Dr. Zrake about. I mean, this is ongoing, um, for a long time that I've talked about it because I, I don't think we need to be putting our students in that position. I mean, it's hard enough for them to know what the struggles that they're going through for us to make it, everybody knows, right? What the backpack? Oh, my God, he's got the backpack. So, we need to start looking, moving out of that and stop using them as a middleman. Now, I'm gonna talk about food. And Irene knows me very well, um, and I'm a bit different. So, okay, so I'm very different. As you can see here, right? This is me. This is what keeps me going, honestly. And it, it's no disrespect to anybody. But I keep hearing how all the students need to be healthy. We need to start changing how we're feeding our students and everything. We're not thinking also about cultural competence, so culturally responsive food. We're not thinking about that. We also have to look at, well, how are these students at home, right? What do they have available? I'm gonna be honest, in my house, I got a lot of egos. My kids, they would grab that ego before they grab that fruit. Couple years back, not even, back in two thousand nine, I wanna say, they wanted to change what used to be a jewelry store on Dwight Street into a supermarket with only fruits and vegetables so that that's all people would get. It's just fruits and vegetables, right? I want everybody to honestly think of what people live off of, right? What it costs to purchase the fruits and vegetables. And I know Irene's gonna say, but it's much healthier, right? And you have to find a means. But that's the first food that spoils quite quickly, right? If I send my child, at that point I was saying, if I send my child with a dollar and then they have an old banana there for ninety-nine cents, one banana, my child's gonna pick the twenty-five cent bag of chips with a fifty cent juice. He just got two things for seventy-five cents. Was it healthy? No, it's not. But he got something. I prefer for my kids to eat, yes, Irene, look at me like that. I prefer for kids to eat and really eat what they're used to eating. And if that's what they want, then that's what they want versus not eating and sitting there still hungry. I, I understand the point that we also have to educate. It's all about education. I walk into homes, many homes every day, especially here in Holyoke. I walk into a lot of homes as a nurse, as a visiting nurse, and I see what people live like. Plus, I see what they have for food, okay? To come and to change them and to say, no, you have to have it this way. We can't just change people. We can educate. We can't change. So, we have to provide for everybody, not just for some. So, with that said, the bag, right? Is there a way to put a bag with a variety of things and they create their own bag with the requirements? So, if it's one liquid, one fruit, one whatever, protein, starch, whatever you wanna call it, so the student can create their own bag that can be counted for? Can that be done?
Yes. We used to have that. And we were finding as we were monitoring our programs, the compliance was out of whack. The children, I mean, because now you're leaving it up to the teacher to really monitor every single day. Because let's be real, they're the person that's in that classroom that has to be responsible to make sure that everyone is, has a reimbursable meal and checked off. Um, so what we were finding was they were just grabbing a juice or just grabbing a, a cereal bar and that was it. And they weren't having a reimbursable meal, yet the teacher was checking them off. So, we were not compliant. So, we went to unitizing a cup, like a reimbursable breakfast, what the state would require as a reimbursable breakfast. So, if the teacher, we made it easy. So, if they just grab this bag, they're compliant. Um, so there was, we used to have that, but we found it district, district-wide, we weren't compliant.
But if we're to say, okay, you, yes, you grabbed that, please grab the other thing. And if you don't want it, give it to somebody who might want it.
Absolutely.
I mean, that, it's just common sense just to say that, like, just grab whatever from there and give it to one of your friends.
And we.
So, that way it could be reimbursed.
And we encourage that, um, a hundred percent. We encourage that with our teachers. But some are wonderful and just some are, are not as focused on the breakfast. So, we're finding those discrepancies. So, we try. So we're finding those discrepancies, so we try to make it easy for compliance purposes.
Okay, well anyways, it's been a long night. We talked enough about food. We've talked a lot about sugar. It is what it is. This will continue, obviously, the conversation. You guys are meeting with students, but again, when we're talking to students, we gotta make sure that we're talking to equal amounts um
Yes.
Of all sides.
Absolutely.
And that we're also addressing dietary restrictions. Individuals, students with diabetes, making sure that we're also addressing their meals. We've talked about gluten free, um individuals with celiac disease, what they can can't have, irritable bowel syndrome. So we really got also make sure that we're providing different alternatives for also those with disorders. Mr. Sheen.
I'm just gonna remind everyone on the committee that we did receive a survey request from Sedexo and to uh encourage the committee members who got that via email. Um, I got one on Tuesday uh to remember to complete that.
Oh, that was and he left it hanging. All right, well, thank you again for coming and uh we look forward to hearing from you again and hopefully we'll get this bringing back cooking and real food.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on, um.
Yeah, of course.
Are we taking a stretch? We're gonna go ahead and move on to accountability results. I wonder if that's gonna be even more.
Somehow
More engaging.
I don't know if uh it's gonna be as uh passionate as food.
This is the sugar that you should have in a day.
So um we're gonna get started um on the uh I'm gonna be Val and I are going to do this together, uh Val and Eer, who's the uh chief of academics. I just wanna, we're gonna give you a brief overview about the MCAS accountability results and then what steps we're taking this year. I do want to just uh point out um that the high school is going to, Dr. Mahoney's gonna come next month to talk about what the high schools focused on more specifically. Tonight's next steps is gonna really be about grades K to eight. Um, so ju- just so you know, the this is the third year that we've given now the grade three to eight MCAS, so we have three years to compare. That's important to note. Um, for grades three to eight in math and ELA, the next generation test. The tenth grade assessment and the in ELA and math and the grade five and the grade eight science shifted this past year. Kids took a new assessment, which makes it a lot harder to look at progress. It doesn't mean you can't, but it's a whole different test and they were told to be careful with comparisons to prior results for for grade ten math and ELA, grade five and eight science. They're typically more rigorous assessments. They're aligned to college and career standards and they're now exclusively computer based. Um, so um that just gives you an overview of the MCAS. I just our 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 results. I think, you know, overall, we are making what I would say modest improvement year to year on um achievement. Um, we saw over the last two years, we've seen an increase in ELA proficiency rates of four percent and two percent in math. Two years ago, we did not see uh any gains in math. This year we saw two percent gain and that's in students who are meeting or exceeding standards um at the highest levels. Um, the uh we saw improvements in scaled scores um in eight of the twelve tested grade levels in math and ELA. Um, I think a particular note is grade three, which you know that grade three is an important indicator for students' future success. That's where we saw the greatest gains as a system over the last three years. We saw five percent increase in the percentage of third graders reading um at proficiency levels. I think it's really important to note MetCaf, which for the first time, at least since I've looked at Holyoke's MCAS data, we had a school that exceeded state averages in both math and ELA in third grade. Um, and I think that's important to note. Um, we we saw improvement in our growth scores in both ELA and math. And we saw the biggest gains in when you look at the subgroups in what we would call the lowest performing, what's categorized the lowest performing students. That is, that means your lowest twenty five percent from the year before. You automatically get a list of students who stay with you from year to year and that were in the lowest performing band. Now, areas for improvement, our lover levels are still too low. We're still too far behind both in growth and achievement at all levels. So I just want to put that out there while we're seeing some gains and we are outpacing the state a little bit in overall achievement uh like fractionally. We have so much gain to make that we can't just afford to have a little bit of gain. We need much more accelerated gain. The science data at the high school did decline from eighteen to nineteen, so I want to note that as an area of per- of concern. And the performance with for students with disabilities declined on the grade three to eight ELA and math MCAS. This this graph just quickly gives you a a quick snapshot. I tried not to overwhelm you with data, although you have a ton of data behind this this uh presentation, but you can see sort of the trajectory we're on in grades three to eight over the last three years um in ELA achievement growth and math achievement and growth. Accountability, which is how we measure um how we're how we measure schools across the state in terms of progress, not just in their MCAS data, but multiple data points. And in your in your presentation, it shows you what indicators the state now uses. That all changed last year, what they use for non-high school indicators and what we use for high school indicators for accountability. I think there's a lot of good news here, generally speaking, um on accountability. So seven schools in the district met more targets in nine in um in nineteen than eighteen. And you can see the list of what those schools are. That means they had they they did much, much better in two thousand nineteen than they did in eighteen. The six schools that met or exceeded their targets or made uh or made substantial progress toward their targets, those schools are of note and that's Donahue, Ian White, Kelly, Lawrence, McMahon and MetCaf. Uh, three schools in Holy in HPS now are designated as not requiring assistance or intervention. Ian White, Lawrence and MetCaf. Last year, we only had one, Lawrence, but Lawrence automatically will always be not requi- requiring intervention because they only have third grade, so they don't have another grade. They they don't get growth data. So really, we had zero last two years ago and this past year we have two, Ian White and MetCaf. Ian White met or exceeded ninety six percent of its targets. That is astronomically high and Ian White deserves tremendous credit. I mean, that in in that one year, um, it didn't do as well last year, but this past year, ninety six percent of your their targets. There are very few schools in the states that that can tout that number. The state uses seventy five percent as the threshold and we had um we we had a number of schools meet seventy five percent or more of their targets. Holyoke High School did very well on its non-academic targets. The advanced, well, I should say, non-MCAS related targets. Advanced coursework, we saw an increase. I remember having this discussion last year where we saw a decrease in advanced coursework. Graduation rate, extended engagement and dropout rate as well as uh chronic absenteeism. Um, but not and non-high schools met their target for chronic absenteeism. We did see an improvement in the percentage of kids chronically absent. Moving in the right direction, we still have um about um low twenty percent of our students who are chronically absent. The areas for improvement on accountability is there were three schools that met fewer targets, Morgan, Peck and Holyoke High School than the previous year. Those are schools we're concerned about and Val's gonna speak to that. Morgan did Morgan did does pretty well relative to the rest of the district, but they did not fare as well in two thousand nineteen as they did in two thousand eighteen. Holyoke High School did not meet the majority of its academic progress targets indicators. Now, it's complicated because last year was the first year that two campuses were merged into one school. It also is the first year that we had a new assessment um for high school. That being said, I am concerned about Holyoke High School's growth data. Uh, and that's something Dr. Mahoney's gonna speak a little more to, like what actions a school is taking for this coming year. As a school system, we're very concerned with the um lack of improvement of our English language learning students. Um, we did not, we declined at all grade levels on the access assessment and the access test is one of the indicators that the state uses now for accountability. So that's assessment just given to English language learners, as many of you know, and we saw declines for English language learners across the district, um and that is an area of concern. The final slide before I turn it to Val that I have is this is where the schools stand in their accountability information. The top three schools are, and it's not ranked in order, but those are the three schools that do not require any intervention according to the state. Um, and then you see the list of schools that are requiring intervention. The last two schools, STEM Academy and Veritas, um did was their first year of existence as a school. So the state um designated them as insufficient data, so they did they did not, they received MCAS data. What they did not receive is accountability data this past year as it was their first year as a school.
Um, I know I have a question from Ms. Brunel and then Mr. Burks.
So my question about the um assessment for English language learners.
Yes.
Is that done like at a certain year annually to
Done annually and uh when is it Annie, February we give it, January?
Every grade level, I guess is my question.
To every English language learner in the district.
Every, so even at the dual language schools?
Yes, and he's it's a law that all of them have to take.
Okay, and then I guess just my second point to this would be looking at the presentation and you know, we all know I'm not in favor of standardized testing, but you know, looking at how our dual dual language schools are outperforming some of our other schools and just to just emphasize on the fact that it doesn't even matter what language you're learning, the the developmental um I can't think of the right word I wanna use, but like just like what that does for your brain, right? Being able to learn a second language at such a young age and what that does to your ability to learn in all aspects of your education and just so how amazing it is to see these numbers supporting that, you know, one of the biggest projects that our district is undertaking and one of the best programs that we're developing in the district.
Yeah, I mean, I would just point out that Ian White does not have dual language in the tested grades.
That's fair.
Yep, um but I do think we're obviously the third grade at uh MetCaf um had extraordinary results. So uh we need to, we're paying attention a lot to what's happening there. Um, I think you have two two teachers that are really um are uh have done, you know, strong educators, but it's also
Alinea and Miss Sestache, they're the third grade teachers.
But it's also what happened before, also leading up to that. Um, and so we need to pay attention. Um, pay attention to what's happening at MetCaf because the results are pretty extraordinary.
Mr. Burks.
Well, at STEM and Veritas, they they did take the MCAS there, right?
Yes, they didn't get accountability results though because of their first year. So they got MCAS, they have MCAS data though.
Where?
Uh, well, you it's in the, I don't know if it's in the data that I provided you in the back. Let me just see. Uh, you online, I can show, if you go to the uh the Department of Education um page, you can see each school's MCAS data, including Veritas and STEM.
For us, it's sufficient data, right? So they should be somewhere on this list listing where exactly they are. So are they up? According to us, would they be not be requiring assistance or are they still requiring assistance according to what we know as a district? Would they require assistance?
Oh, and so in my assessment, yes, they definitely
Other schools, would they not require?
Uh, particularly
They're struggling as well.
Well, particularly STEM, particularly STEM because Veritas had pretty good growth data um in their performance uh in math and ELA. Uh, their achievement level is still low, but STEM had very, very low growth data. And so STEM is a school that we've identified as a high, high priority school. But yes, to answer your question.
But this is this is online. I didn't see STEM, STEM and Veritas is online and Veritas is
You can see their MCAS data there, yep.
Thank you.
And if you have trouble finding it, let let us know.
Uh, Mr. Burks and then I'm sorry, Mr. Sheen and then Mr. Collmore.
Can I ask ask my question that we had talked about a few weeks ago?
Okay.
So just give some background for the committee. When a student enrolls in our district, they are asked if they um if there's another language spoken in the home by someone, if they speak another language. So all these questions asked, if you answer yes to any of them, you get a home language survey to find out if you require services. I'm curious because how many students do we have have been classified EL students that really should have been sped students, but because linguistically they could not successfully get through a home language survey have been placed into EL programs that can never get out of it since the state guidance provides that we cannot remove a student who is a sped student that has been categorized as a EL student.
Um, something we've been talking about a lot with the state um and in Holyoke but across the state. We actually just hired a full-time person to review home language surveys so that we are appropriately um identifying students. So that when parents fill out the home language survey, it is um talked about with them. They are informed of what um question, how you know, what the questions are. Um, and we've been doing a lot of training with our special ed team about um the differences between a a learning disability and a language barrier. So it's something we've been talking about a lot. Unfortunately, you're right, the state does not allow us to remove sta- a status from
Great, but how many students do we believe that are sped students that have no reason being in an EL classroom that we are unable to no longer classify as an L um in the district?
I can't tell you that off the top of my head. I'd have to look at the data. Um.
And how many of them could never pass access to even flip out of it with that? I mean, it's there has to be students that I'm sure that could not pass the home language survey that were placed as an EL because they said that grandma speaks Spanish.
Yeah, that that's true. There's the way that the state uh has us identifying students, it's gonna particularly be difficult for students who may be duly identified as having a special education need in addition to a language need. However, we do have um a significant amount of of EL students in our district and so we're we're pretty confident that that's not going to be half of the students that we're serving as is EL, so um.
But when you think accountability, if these students are never actually gonna be able to show they're adequately making progress, then you're never gonna be able to attain your goal, even if you had ten students spread out that never should have been in an EL classroom that we can never remove because we've been waiting for, I think, four years from guidance from the state and how we would even do that.
So this is something like Annie mentioned, we have conversations with the state regularly with, we've brought it back to the forefront this year to talk about what are some of the um some of the steps that they can take to help us with this. So if we have students who are misidentified as EL students, how do we account for that and not just go straight from they're going to be uh labeled as an EL student until they can um pass the the language acquisition assessment, right? Until they get reach a certain level on access. So we're in conversations with them on that. Um, and so that's really a state decision and not a district decision.
But I mean, the conversations are going on for four years. I mean, the state has been supposed to be providing guidance for four, so it's great that there's conversations, but I'm curious how many and I'd like to really find out how many students should not be um receiving English language services because they are truly sped students and just could not get through the home language survey.
So there would be different levels of special education that we would have to look at because you can be duly identified as both and and rightly so. Um, that's data that Annie and her team have started to to gather. It's a lot of information to comb through from past records. Um, so that's something we can come back to for you.
I I think it's a disservice that the state is forcing districts. I I would even say that it's probably a civil rights violation for those kids to be forced to be having provided these services that they're never needed. It's a complete waste of money um because these kids maybe have some of them maybe have never spoken the other language themselves or just could not ever pass um that and are it it's ridiculous that the state will not let districts uh move these students just because they did not have the the abilities because they're special ed students to pass the home language survey.
I mean, Devin, you're absolutely right. I mean, there's nothing that you just said that I disagree with. So I mean, this is an issue that we are I mean, and and the feds are also part of this as well, what they expect in terms of um it's not just the state, I mean, part I we do need more clarity on this because for us, that is a significant, significant issue. Uh, we have met, it's it's it's, you know, there are many dual identified students that um I mean, there is the possibility of being dual identified, of course.
Of course.
Right, but we have a high percentage of kids in substantially separate stu- classes who are duly identified. Um, and you know, um, and they're leading, I mean, their special ed designation should really Um, and, you know, um, and they're leading, I mean, their special ed designation should really be what's lead, what, leading because they would never be able to pass the home language survey.
The problem is though, is that if you have a special ed student that early on is misidentified, a district can reassess that student and identify that student appropriately. A student does not have to stay in special ed services for their entire life because they maybe were misidentified or no longer need those services. But an EL student, if they are special ed, has to stay in EL services for their entire life just because they are special ed, and that's wrong.
Especially if they take the alternative access, there's actually no level, like.
You're gone, if you take the alternative, you're, it's gone, you can't even level, like, there's no flipping if you.
So you can, you can fail at a 4.2 if you are duly identified, but the P3 and A3 levels for the alternative access don't, yeah.
I mean, it really is a disservice that the state is putting every single student, uh, in every district, forcing them to do this. I mean, it's a waste of resources. I mean, there are students who truly need English language and sped services, and we maybe can't provide those to those students because we're wasting resources for students that don't.
I don't think anybody on our side, on our team would disagree with anything you just said. Can we tape you saying that?
It's being taped.
Well, that's right.
That would be on the community access channel. Mr. Collmore?
Uh, Dr. Go back to the MedCaf school, third grade, uh, improvements. Is that going to be spread out as quickly as possible to the other schools so that we can see improvements in the, all our schools?
Well, generally, we're seeing improvements across the third grade, um, in the system, but you're right. I mean, uh, we, what we're doing is trying to learn about what that school, it's just, I, I want to be fair. It's not just about those third grade teachers because a lot happens before those kids get to third grade. So it's about what happens at MedCaf school to support kids all the way through. Um, and so that is something we're paying a close attention to and the academic team is working closely. You know, we want other schools to see some of that success, but we have other pockets of that success throughout the system as well. But, um, we just have to learn from the good work that they're doing at MedCaf.
You guys want to continue?
All right.
Yes. All right, so, um, first of all, not only am I hungry for some nutritious food, but I also have like a hangry and to go do some art after this because it's been pretty interesting. Um, I'm going to try to go through this pretty quickly for you, but we will answer any questions. Annie Days here is our, our Director of English Learner and Dual Language, and Sue Huckle is here as our ELA Director and Humanities. And so I'll be referring to them for some of the questions that you have so that they can give you some of the, the, um, information directly related to their fields. So. Sorry, this goes backwards. There we go. So we're going to focus our, um, how we are designing our supports for the district around multi-tiered systems of support. And I just wanted to put this graphic up here and tell you a little bit about, like, this is a main focus of professional development and a lot of our action steps are around building the entire system to support academic, social, emotional learning and behavioral supports for, for students to be successful. Today, you're going to hear a little bit around the implementation drivers and how we're using that to build strong core and providing other resources so that we can provide interventions and acceleration where needed. Okay, so it looks, it looks like arrow down is really the one we want to use, okay. So for multi-tiered systems of support, I want to just give you this as the framing. It's not about what about our students do we need to, um, think about around that's causing the discrepancy in their performance. Instead, what we want to think about is what is it between curriculum, instruction, learning environment, and the learners themselves that, that can be altered to help support students' improvement, all right? So that's, that's really the focus. It's not the students, it's the system in which we're providing that education in. Specifically, the academic team, I'm going to talk about three buckets that we have some, um, some concrete steps that we've been taking, and that's in tiered continuum and providing evidence-based practices. It's in high-quality curriculum and instruction, and then also what we're doing as a district around database decision-making. So under the continuum of learning, I just give you some quick highlights of some of the work that's happening at the school level, and that's being supported by the academic team. We continue to increase academic coaching in, across all of the schools, in ELA and in math particularly. And then we've also provide, uh, training to our building, uh, English learner leads that are in all the schools. So that is with a focus that they spread their practice across to, and, and are able to provide embedded supports and coaching to the teachers in the, in the, in the schools. This year, we have a professional development system for the four days that's a little more tailored. Um, and it's designed to provide differentiated sessions based on content or learning a specific skill. So we have sessions for teachers in math, specific to certain grade levels, ELA, English language learning content, social emotional learning content, and it goes on. And the purpose of that is to not only just target what my needs might be as an educator, and I can have a little bit of choice about what I'm getting professionally developed in from the district, but also our schools, um, our teachers lack the opportunity to collaborate across buildings. And so this is a way for them to come together in small groups and also have some collaborative learning time. So each two-day session, we have four days, are designed to have at least a half a day on the second day of the sessions where teachers can collaborate and plan together so that they're able to plan for what they've learned and how they're going to incorporate that in the classrooms. Also, uh, as a district, we're involved in some statewide learning around tiered systems and academies. And I don't know if you get access to this, but, um, Liz can share this with you. Those are live links underneath the tiered math, PBIS, and then students, systematic student support. It'll give you, once you have this, uh, you can link into that, you could see a little description of what that is. So for tiered math, there's several different, um, mathematics training that is happening for staff that we have smaller cohorts going through, led by Tara Brant, our math director. And then in the others too, so it'll give you a quick little blurb of what it is and then who's involved from across the district in those academies. The idea around that is to take our learning at the, the state level, at that larger level, and then help implement and kind of tailor it to our needs in Holyoke. This year, Drs. Reich and, um, the school supervisors, we've brought in a, a new, um, type of visit for, for the schools, and it's, it's focused specifically on a instructional quality review. We've partnered with someone who comes in, they spend some time with the school leadership team. They've, they learn the context of that school, what are you actually focused on for that particular school? And then they provide focused feedback around the instructional practices and what you've outlined as a school, as your improvement plan, uh, strategies. And so far, those, uh, we've had four of those visits so far. The, there'll be another five over the next few months. And so far, they've been very well aligned to what the schools have identified as their priorities. And so that's affirming that while we have a lot of growth to do that, like Dr. Reich had mentioned, at least our schools and our supports at the district level so far are aligned in the right way. So we're, we're feeling confident that, um, we're on the right course. I'm not going to read through this, but I wanted you to see specifically, um, one of the things that we know that we have to do is in order to meet students where they are, to provide the supports that they need to grow to the maximum that they can, is that we need some tier two or interventional programs, uh, available. And so we've been slowly adding to our intervention lists, and this is just an example of some of what we have going on. It, I do want to say, it doesn't mean it's available in all schools at all grade levels if it's up here, but rather, we work with the schools to tailor some of the supports that we have. So some schools may have, um, maybe implementing READ 180, but that's because we've gone into partnership with them and that's something they felt strongly about. And others may be doing Lexia Core 5, things like that. But all of the, all of the programming that you see here that's tier two is, um, research-based and highly effective. Like, we've vetted the programs that we're supporting in the schools to make sure that they're, um, of high quality and that they will have good results. I'm also not going to read through this list because you have it in front of you and you've been here a long time already. But, um, under high-quality instruction and curriculum, we, this, it gives you an idea of some of the things that we have in place and for each of these areas. I thought it was important to show you, uh, what we have for, uh, social emotional learning supports as well as, um, the curriculums. What I do want to point out is that in order to save space, we use a lot of acronyms in education. So I just want to go through and just tell you what some of this means. Um, and then I also want to highlight that this year, the ethnic studies teachers in the middle school are going through a, um, a, um, PD session and, uh, excuse me, it's late. PLC time together to revise their curriculum and align it to the new, uh, Social Studies Massachusetts standards. So keeping that, the, the ethnic studies curriculum in place, but getting it aligned to the, the state standards more. And that's something that's been do, uh, been started this year, and they have hopes to have that completed with the revision. Um, IM, as you can see, there, that is illustrative math, that's a math curriculum. So anywhere you see IM capitalized, it's just the core curriculum resource. It's for, it's an open source, um, and it's highly rated on both ed reports and through the state as being, um, one of the higher rated math curriculums. And we use that in six, and we're beginning, six through eight, and we're beginning to implement it and embed it and infuse it in nine through 12, um, as well. Uh, PL, T W under science means Project Lead the Way, and we have two schools that are implementing modules from Project Lead the Way, which is around engineering and hands-on project-based science, uh, learning and that it would be the STEM middle school and also the high school has some, some of those modules as well. So for database decision-making, there's a few things that are happening across all of the schools. One is that we, we consistently, um, provide time for teachers to look at student information. And, uh, part of that information are our benchmark formative assessments that are standards-based, uh, our STAR assessments, which are, is a norm-referenced assessment that allows us to see where students are with meeting benchmarks. And then also, uh, specific intervention progress monitoring, which means it's not an additional assessment at all. But if I'm utilizing certain computer programs that are interventions, I also get a lot of information as a teacher from that program so that I can use that to guide my instructional planning. The implementation of a 45-day survey, this is really like a snapshot. Teachers and schools are using this right now. So if I have a classroom with my 20 students in it, let's say I'm a third grade teacher, I'm going to, um, just quickly take, uh, fill out this 45-day survey. It has questions such as, you know, vision, hearing, it, it talks about the student as a whole, right? So do I notice attentional, um, strengths or challenges? Do I, it goes through health, learning, and then behavioral pieces. And so the idea is that we're able to quickly go through that information at the school level and decide, is there some simple, um, supports that we can put in place to make sure we're meeting the students' needs? So that's, that's being done right now. And then because we have a lot of information and teachers' jobs are really hard, right? Um, we want to make sure that they have ample time to, to take and collaborate with one another and look at all the information they have for instructional planning. So this year, there are three half-days that are embedded into the calendar that are specifically designed for the teaching and learning cycle. And what that means is that those dates, when they come up, I have all of my information. I bring in some student work samples, I take a look at some of those formative assessments we've done throughout the year, and we use that time to look at it together as a team and then plan our instruction together. So those are kind of like the real quick and dirty around, under those buckets of, um, just, decide, decision-making, instructional, uh, high-quality instructional materials, and then also tiered supports that we're putting across all schools. What we want to talk about are maybe some system supports too, and then how we've prioritized additional work. Uh, we mentioned briefly the school review process, that's a district-wide priority and a support. Uh, the, the highest leverage point of that is that it's, it's very comprehensive around the instructional review in the school. It's school-specific, which is great because we want to make, all of our schools have a different, uh, culture, and they have different priorities, and we want to honor that. And, um, and we're also, our school leader professional development is focused on two pieces. One is around culturally relevant teaching and practices, and that is, um, that is steeped in a book study that we're going through as a leadership team with all of the principles, principles. There's an image of it there for you, and that's the Zaretta Hammond book, Culturally Responsive Teaching and the Brain. And then the other component for our leader training is through, uh, developing and providing tiered supports uh, for students, both in academics, behavioral, and social emotional needs. Drs. Reich alluded to the fact that we have some priority schools. Here's the, the priority schools that we have right now that we are doing, uh, going above and beyond the, the supports that all schools are getting. And the schools are Morgan and, uh, STEM, which, um, Mr. Burks had asked about, STEM is definitely one of our priorities. PEC, Sullivan, and then the high school. The high school, you're going to hear more from Dr. Mahoney at a later meeting, so we're not going to really talk about that too much. But you can see a list here of some of the things that we're providing in addition to, um, our supports in other schools. So there's specific tier one and tier two coordination and support from the academic directors. What that means is that, uh, the math director, or Annie as the EL director, or Sue as the ELA director, is going in to meet with school teams and helping them de- design their action steps and providing supports. It could be on-the-ground coaching, it could be providing professional learning for that school or a subset of the, of the teachers at that school. Um, and if you have any questions, they can give you a little bit more information. Starting in November, myself and the principals will be meeting just specifically around their instructional data. So just having a conversation around, let's take a look at what your first STAR assessment showed. Where, um, where do you think maybe some of the priorities need to be shifted? Let's go in and take a look at a few classrooms. So that's just collaboration time with the principals, specific to just their instructional information. Uh, there's also different professional learning that is happening for teachers in some of the targeted areas. And I'm just, I'm not going to mention anymore because you can see it all there on the screen.
Thank you, that was awesome. Any questions? It doesn't seem that this, this, um, topic is quite engaging. Mr. Sheehan?
Yeah, I'd just like to hear more about the, uh, new core curriculum at Holyoke.
So they, that's a good question. Um, I can tell you that as recently as earlier today, uh, was having conversation with some, the math department lead, uh, or academic coach and, um, the associate principal at the high school. And they have started to revamp math curriculum where we're, we're using some of, with the help of Tara Brant, who's the math director, who would like to have been here so she could answer questions if you had them, but she had a, a family priority that, uh, had to be taken care of tonight. So as far as, as math goes, we have not purchased new resources yet for math at the high school, but we've begun to revamp algebra and geometry courses, and they're looking at other core courses and aligning it with the illustrative math, uh, and using some Engage New York, which is another highly rated curriculum resource, and they've been building their units around that. Moving forward, um, we're all in alignment, both at the, the school level and at the district level, that we'd like to purchase, um, illustrative math in the future and think about, use this year to kind of plan what that implementation rollout will look like. We find that that's a, a much more user-friendly, um, resource. And one of the things we're trying to do at the district level is to not only have high-quality curriculum resources for teachers, but ones that are more easy, um, teacher-friendly. Because their job is hard enough and they should be spent using the resource as opposed to creating the resource. We want them to think about how to plan their instruction for engaging our students in, you know, high academic tasks and not, um, and not having to build their own. So we're shifting in that direction for, for that. Um, they have, then, they have begun implementing, um, a new ELA this year, ELA curriculum. Oh, my gosh, it's, uh, Springboard, which is, uh, another, uh, ELA resource that's been highly rated. Um, and then they have some other ones in the works. Uh, they do have the Project Lead the Way, and they've been revamping their science pathways a little bit, using that as a primary source, and then they use some veneer science, um, resources that, that they can get online.
Any other questions? No, excellent. Thank you so much for coming and, um, providing your report.
Yep, um, thank you. And in your, just in your packet, you have a lot more information on the results of the schools. Um, I didn't put every individual school, but you can see our district's accountability rating. If you want to discuss any of it. If you want to discuss any of it at any time, happy to do so. I did leave you, do you want me to transition into the next part, the superintendent correspondence?
Where am I, I'm sorry? Yes, yes, we're going to move on to that.
You guys can go home.
You're, you're all set.
Yes.
But feel free to please, please stay and join us.
Yeah, thank you to the academic team, really appreciate it. You have a lot in your packet, and I gave you each a, some notes of what's, of things happening this week.
Are you okay?
Don't lose anybody here. I would point out that there is, this is STEM week, so there's a ton of STEM activities. I'd love for any of you to attend if you can. Kelly School has an event tomorrow night from 5:00 to 6:00 p.m. Holyoke STEM Academy has a showcase on Friday from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. for families and community, and then McMahon School has a whole host of events through the week. These are just small, and I know Holyoke High is doing a whole host of things as well. The Equity Coalition meets on Thursday from 6:00 to 7:30. There is a special education PAC meeting, which is the trunk-or-treat event, which will be hosted at Holyoke High School. I know we're having, a number of schools are going to be, have, have their cars decorated for the kids, but it's open to anybody. And then I do want to just call your attention to the enrollment. I gave you the October 1st enrollment data. We are up 113 students from October 1st a year ago, so that's a, that's a very positive sign and will result in additional funding for the FY21 school year. Mildred would like me to point out that there's an autism insurance workshop at Donahue School on Wednesday from 5:00 to 7:30, and I do also want to, just the final thing, and is that in your packet, it might have been lost, is there was a projection of the Student Opportunity Act that is currently being discussed at, in, you know, at the state level around a redo of the educational funding formula, and it does show you what Holyoke stands to gain, which is substantial amounts of dollars between FY21 and FY27 once these new rates are fully phased in. We could talk more about it at a future meeting, I just wanted you to have some of those preliminary figures. It will, could result in millions of extra dollars for the children of the city over the next seven years, which is very good news, yes.
What time is the workshop for autism?
It's on you, it's in the-
Oh, okay.
Yep, it's 5:00 to 7:30 at Donahue School.
Thank you.
That's on Wednesday.
Yes.
This Wednesday.
There's a lot happening across the schools in the next week.
Okay, excellent. Going on to new business. We are going to elect the voting and alternate delegates to the annual Massachusetts Association of School Committees Delegate Assembly. That's coming up November 6th to the 9th. So the, Mr. Sheen.
I'll make a motion to nominate Ms. Feliciano Sims as the delegate and Ms. LaFabe as the alternate.
Is there a second? Second? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None abstained?
Just Irene.
Just Irene. All right, so then that means Irene will be the voting delegate at the, at the state conference, and, thank you. Make us proud, Irene.
Absolutely.
We're going on to the meeting minutes of August 19th. We've got a motion to move, all right, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Great. Motion passes unanimously. And now moving on to old business, any old business? Anyone going once, twice? All righty, no old business. Do I have a motion? Oh, announcements. Anybody have an announcement? Mr. Sheen.
I will just remind people that Election Day is November 5th. No matter who or what you vote for, go out and vote. Polls are open from 7:00 to 8:00 in Holyoke. If you are not going to be in the city on Election Day, make sure to reach out to the city clerk's office and get your absentee ballot. Everyone needs to make their voices heard all the time.
Any other announcements? Okay, anybody want to put in a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Didn't think so. None abstained, so meeting adjourned at 8:35.